All right. It's actually great to have a nice full house and have all these conversations going on, starting a few minutes late. I love it. That's what we call engagement, which I love. But if you can please make your way into your seat and have a seat so that we can begin the meeting, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I'll call this meeting to order. We're now in the LPA. If we can please call the roll.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Chair Kozinski.
Here.
Board Member Albritton.
Present.
Board Member Hartman.
Here.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Thank you again for being here this evening. Really appreciate that. So we are in the LPA. If we can please read in item number three.
Item number three. This is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, the LPA, recommending that the town council adopt an amendment to the future land use map of the town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan to change the designation of approximately 59 acres from agricultural to U.S. Highway 27 business, generally located on the east side of U.S. Highway 27 between the C-11 canal to the north, Sterling Road to the south, and Menora Gardens Cemetery to the east, providing for an effective date, and this is application PA 20-8.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the council on this item? Seeing none, is there any discussion from the public on this item? Seeing none. Please call the roll.
Board Member Albritton.
Yes.
Board Member Hartman.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kozinski.
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Excellent. Item number four, please.
Item number four is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, the LPA, recommending that the town council rezone approximately 59 acres from A1 agricultural estate to U.S. Highway 27 planned business, generally located on the east side of U.S. Highway 27 between the C-11 canal to the north, Sterling Road to the south, and Menora Gardens Cemetery to the east, providing for an effective date, and this is application RZ 24-23.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item from the council?
What is this, six years' worth of work?
This is a ton of work. This has gone through the comp board a couple of times. We've had tremendous amount of resident input. Certainly, the owners have been involved, and it's great to see this all coming together.
Yep.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment closed. If you can please call the roll.
Board Member Albritton.
Yes.
Board Member Hartman.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kozinski.
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Excellent. Item number five, approval of the minutes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Is there any adjustments to the minutes or corrections to the minutes from the council? Seeing none, is there any adjustments or corrections from the minutes from the public? Seeing none. If you can please call the roll.
Board Member Albritton.
Yes.
Board Member Hartman.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kozinski.
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Minutes passed.
Motion to adjourn.
So we'll adjourn the LPA, and we will go right into our normal, regular meeting. Please call the roll.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kozinski.
Here.
Council Member Albritton.
Present.
Council Member Hartman.
Here.
Council Member Jablonsky.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Once again, welcome, and once again, it's great to see a full house. All right. Quasi judicial. Keith.
Mayor, we have one quasi judicial item on the agenda tonight. I would ask for the clerk to please read it into the record.
This is a resolution and final order of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving site plan application number SP 86-24 by BBX Logistics Properties, LLC, for approximately 335,000 square feet of warehouse on the parcel generally known as the CCA property, inclusive of all or parts of lot 60, 61, and 62 of the replat of portion of West Broward Industrial Park, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Since this is a quasi judicial item, we need to swear in anyone who wishes to speak on this item, including the applicants, representatives, and members of the public. If the clerk could please now swear anyone in who wishes to speak.
Please stand if you wish to speak on the item. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Before we commence with the proceeding, has any member of the town council had any ex parte communications concerning the site plan?
None.
I was on a call just within last week with some of the participants.
Thank you. All right. At this point, what I'll do is, who's going to present for Altman? If you could just come to the podium, obviously state your name for the record that you've been sworn in and that you've reviewed the staff report and agree with the findings.
Absolutely. My name is Francisco Reyna. Good evening. I am vice president for Altman Logistics Properties, formerly known as BBX Logistics Properties. On behalf of Altman, I want to thank the town council for all the cooperation that they've done with us so far and for the resolution for tonight. I want to affirm that we have a strong commitment in taking this, going through the permit process as soon as possible. We have engaged a large team of engineers, attorneys, consultants, environmentalists to help us get through the end as quickly as possible. As you're aware, there's a lot of agencies involved, and local, state, and federal that we have to go through, but we're very excited about the opportunity, so that's all.
Thank you. At this time, Jeff Cadens will present the staff report.
Thank you, Keith. Good evening, mayor and council. Just going to summarize this, if that's okay with the mayor. This is for 335,617 square feet of warehouse distribution space on the former, what we call the CCA property, which is just over 24 acres. Originally, the plan had been three, I believe it was three individual buildings. Now it's one large building. If you've seen one warehouse distribution, you've probably seen all of them. It's a big building with loading in the back, park, you know, for semi-trailers and parking on the other side with retention areas, including the FPL easement, which is just naturally low, and then a new area that would be created to the north. Access is going to be off 202nd Avenue, which has to be built. There's County right-of-way, there's Pines right-of-way farther south, so there's going to be some coordinated permitting. We'll have to go on with that. The entrance, the egress and ingress into the site is channelized into one access, one two-way access for the parking, where the automobiles will go to get to the front of the building on the north side, and then one really dedicated just for the heavy truck traffic on the south. So it's a nice circulation plan. We do recommend approval with three conditions. One of them is just given the nature of the challenges in developing this property with the various permitting agencies and whatnot, we do recommend that you authorize the town administrator to administratively approve any modifications to the approved plan that the administrator deems necessary and appropriate to comply with any ULDC or fire department access requirements, site photometrics, dumpster enclosure details, architectural details, generally the more minor things, and then anything that essentially doesn't involve additional area height or intensity that would have to come back to the council, or anything that would require a variance. Number two, permits for construction of Southwest 202nd Avenue must be obtained from the applicable jurisdictions prior to issuance of a building permit for vertical construction. Construction of Southwest 202nd must be completed and accepted on final inspection by the respective permitting jurisdictions prior to issuance of a CO. And three, prior to issuance of a building permit for vertical construction, an agreement with the city of Pembroke Pines must be executed and recorded for its provision of municipal potable and water and sanitary sewer services to the property or larger area of the town that includes the property.
Does any member of the town council have any questions of Jeff at this time? Seeing none, does the applicant have any questions of staff at this time? Do you want to make any additional presentation? John?
Mr. Mayor and council, my name is John Chabarro. I'm with the law firm of Greenberg-Trowrigg. We represent Altman. I'm here with my colleague Danielle Gonzalez from Greenberg, who specializes in the real estate aspect of this deal, and William Muller from Miller Lake, who's helping me handle the permits. I'm an environmental lawyer, and you could tell this is a Gordian knot of permits, but I will tell you, we are pushing hard, continuing to do so. We concur with the, and agree to the conditions that are tell you we anticipate closing on this first quarter of next year. So, thank you very much. We're here if you have any questions, but we appreciate your consideration and your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, does any member of the town council have any questions of the applicant, Mr. Chabarro, or anyone else on their team at this?
I don't. Mayor, I got one quick question, if I could. The site plan approval, is that usually done before the purchase is completed?
Yes.
That's customary, correct?
It's part of our agreement with them, and generally, a developer wouldn't buy a site unless the municipality has approved the site plan.
Thank you.
In this case, just for the record, they're not seeking any variances, waivers, or special exceptions, or anything. It is 100% to code. They have not asked for anything.
Thank you.
Great. Now, I just wanted to add a comment, really not a question, but as I mentioned earlier, I did have the opportunity to sit down on one of the calls that we had just recently on this project, and I'll just, passing along to everyone else, that it was amazing, the detail that was required, and all the approvals, and they have them all listed out, and they're all being applied for, and they're all moving forward with no particular issues, but it is amazing the amount of work that needs to be done to pull something like this together. So we appreciate the teamwork, working with the town. Keith, we appreciate all your work as well on this and facilitating this project. This is critical to our town's future, and both from a revenue standpoint, we should be able to pay off all of our debt with this. How many towns in Broward County can say that they would be debt-free? I don't believe there are any. And you combine that with our third-lowest millage in Broward County, it's pretty amazing. I would say that we would be the most financially sound community in all of Broward. So this is important to our community, and it's a lot of hard work, and I know that this group has already invested a tremendous amount of money to make it happen, and we are also committed to it, so it's great to see us take this next step. Thank you.
I did have one question. Go ahead. Jeff, I know we've heard of the evolution of these plans from the very beginning, and it's always been descriptive. One of the descriptions included at some point exterior storage. There was going to be outside storage and under roof. It looks to me, based on the site plan, it's all under roof now.
Everything's enclosed.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
In fact, and John, you may want to address this, the Altman group, when they met with us, have been exploring the single tenant users on this building, which is why it changed from three buildings to one, and they have tremendous amount of interest from a single tenant user to actually get this up and running and sign a deal, and for the council to recall, when they make revenue, we make revenue because we're partners going forward, and we get a percentage of the rental income. So at this time, I'll call on a member of the public who wishes to speak on this item. If you could please state your name for the record if you've been sworn in, and Russell will set the time.
Jim Jablonsky, 5780 Southwest 188th Avenue. This sounds like a heck of a nice plan.
Have you been sworn in, Jim? Jim, have you sworn in?
Oh, I'm sorry. I swear to tell the truth. Does that work for you?
No. Deborah will have to swear you in.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Jablonsky.
Nice try.
Do you swear to tell the?
Are you going to?
I'm going to look it right there. You're good. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
This sounds like a really good deal for the town. However, I would think one more little tiny investment from the group would be to help support our anti-incinerator campaign, because you're going to have one hell of a fleet of garbage trucks lining your perimeter, and to me, it'd be a well-wise investment to come up with a couple of dollars for our outreach program we're soon to launch. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Any other member of the public which is going to speak on this item? Please, come up.
Lori Parrish, 12801 Southwest, excuse me, LaRae Road, Southwest Ranches.
Lori, have you been sworn in?
No.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Always have, yes.
Thank you.
My question is, does this in any way give a vested right? And listen, I think the principles of BBX are fine gentlemen, done lots of work through the years with them, and have the utmost respect, but what I'm a little concerned about is site plan approval before purchase. Does this in any way give them a vested right if for some, and I can't imagine why, reason that the town were to back out of this?
No. I mean, I'm happy to answer when we're done with public comment.
Yeah, when we get down to public comment, we'll answer.
And any other member of the public wishes to speak on it? Seeing none, public session. Please state your name if you've been sworn in also.
All right. I have not been sworn in.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hi, I'm John Garotti, resident 5901 Southwest 162nd Avenue. I'm very brief. I've been asked this question many times, and maybe Keith can just answer it, and that's the end of that. Wasn't this property, and again, excuse my ignorance, this property had a lawsuit on it, and I just wanted to know if that was resolved, and if I have the same property, and if I'm not mistaken, that property was under contract to Supreme Organics? That's the only question I have, and if that can be answered, would be great. And if that case is still ongoing in court?
Sure. Have a seat. We'll answer the questions.
Cool. Any other member of the public wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, public session is closed. I'll answer probably both the questions.
Please.
The way the deal works, and John, you can correct me if I'm wrong, as legal counsel for the purchaser, in the event that they back out on the deal, or, you know, for some reason, the town has to declare breach and end the deal, the town becomes the owner of all materials, permits, applications, site plans, architectural plans, anything that they had done on that property. And as a result, while their site plan approval tonight makes the property more valuable because it's a vested property at that point, it's still the town's unless, you know, and we can change it if we want or proceed. It doesn't give BBX anything, all of those materials, if the deal does not come to fruition or the town's, so.
That wasn't my question. My question was, have you ever been in Harris' act, given the absence of a vested right if the town were to back out?
No, they don't have any vested right. John will tell you on the record they don't. Burch J. Harris is generally dealing with downzonings and demution and property value. It didn't occur in this case. They, and I'll let John, if you could please state for the record as well.
Again, John Chabarro with Greenberg-Trowrigg. No, there is no vested right in the property. Altman has no vested right currently.
Thank you. And there was a question about, a couple of questions concerning lawsuits. Obviously, there was an original lawsuit dealing with the overall property with Pembroke Pines, and that was whether or not they tortuously interfered with the prison there. That case is long over, long settled. We also had a dispute, in fact, the Burgeons were involved in it at some point, concerning deannexation of a wide strip of area that we went to the Florida Legislature on and prohibited the deannexation of this property and other properties, you know, from the town. That loss, there's nothing going on with that anymore. The Burgeons aren't doing anything with that anymore, so that issue is totally resolved. Supreme Organics does have a lawsuit against the town, but it's not in regards to the property, it's in regards to their general agreement. Supreme Organics claimed that when the town and Supreme Organics entered into an agreement, and that agreement never came to fruition, they're claiming that the town committed fraud by not identifying the fact that there were wetlands on the property, or claiming that there's wetlands on every property in Broward County, and that they should have done their due diligence to determine the wetlands. They are not seeking any rights to the property at all, they're just seeking economic damages from the town as a result of the failure of that contract to come to fruition.
Thank you, Keith. Public comment is closed?
Yes, sorry.
Okay.
Any concluding comments from Jeff? Any concluding comments from the applicant, Francisco, John? None. Mayor, it's over to you for deliberation, again, because it's quasi judicial. If you find that it meets the criteria of the code, you can approve, deny, approve with conditions. I think staff provided three conditions. It requires five unanimous vote of the town council.
Thank you. All right. So, is there?
Maker of the motion has to modify.
For the three, we need to modify for those three conditions?
I'll modify for the three conditions that you've noted.
Correct. Perfect. And who seconded?
I think I did.
Mayor.
Okay.
Just to be clear, those were three zoning conditions, but the resolution actually has five, so the fourth and the fifth are that the property is limited to storage and distribution warehouse.
Great.
And fifth, that the site plan will control construction of the improvements on the property despite any potentially conflicting agreement in the profit participation plan agreement. So if you approve the resolution as presented, then you're approving it with all five conditions.
With all five, so, okay, so we don't need to modify the motion, because that's how we made the original motion.
Perfect.
All right. Is there any additional?
Yeah, Mayor, that's a great idea, that they're putting it all under roof, there'll be nothing outside. That's just, to combine everything into one is great.
It does.
Just great.
Yep. Yep. Any further comments, questions from the council?
Call a question.
Please call the roll.
Council Member Albritton.
Yes.
Council Member Hartman.
Yes.
Council Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski.
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you all. Appreciate you coming out. All right. The next items, we have three proclamations. The first one is the horse and farm preservation, and this is something that, yeah, is near and dear to the hearts of many of us here in the ranches. You know, we were born out of a farm and rural community, and that's where our roots are, and I believe that's where our hearts are. And sometimes, in today's world, with everything going on, we can kind of lose sight of that. And so I think this proclamation is right on target, focusing us again on our roots and how important it is to us to remember going forward. So if we can please read that proclamation.
Whereas the town of Southwest Ranches was incorporated on June 6, 2000, with the stated purpose of preserving its rural lifestyle, and whereas the town council recognizes that agricultural lands constitute unique and irreplaceable resources of townwide importance, whereas the town council recognizes that the conservation of agricultural preserves the landscape and environmental resources of the town contributes to the increase of tourism, furthers economic self-sufficiency of the town, and results in a general benefit to the health and welfare of the people of the town. Whereas the town council further acknowledges that agricultural properties are particularly vulnerable to removal from agricultural use due to increasing urbanization of our South Florida area. Whereas the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches has adopted proactive policies to support conservation of agriculture in the town, including creation of a staff agricultural liaison position to assist residents to navigate regulatory processes, facilitating outreach for residents with the Broward County Property Appraiser who is responsible for agricultural exemption, creating a new residential lot configuration for properties to ensure space for agricultural buildings, establishment and support of the year-round weekly farmers' market, funding the fiscal year 2025 composting pilot program kickoff, enabling 100 properties to create and explore the natural processes of recycling organic matter. And whereas the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches wishes to take a more proactive role in the preservation and promotion of equestrian and agricultural properties to preserve the town's rural character for present and future generations, whereas the preservation of rural lands requires a commitment from public and private landowners, and whereas growth in the form of subdivision and development should coexist in harmony with the rural character of the town. Now, therefore, there be proclaimed that the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches establishes the Horse and Farm Preservation Act of the town of Southwest Ranches in support of the town's remaining agricultural properties on this, the 24th day of October 2024.
Awesome. Very good. Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you. And I just want to call out Mary Ann, thank you for all your work on this and always keeping us focused and guided, so I appreciate that as well. Absolutely, yes. Awesome. You know, we have, we're a very fortunate community in that we have such a diversity of individuals and backgrounds and cultures, and that makes us a stronger community. And one of the things that I'm really proud of is our partnership that we've had with different religious groups, and in the Hindu group, and we've done this recognition for the last several years, and it's just awesome. And I just want to, before we actually read the proclamation, I just want to thank you all for being involved and for sharing your gifts with our community and allowing us to participate with you, so thank you for that. So if we can please read that proclamation.
Hindu Heritage Month and the Festival of Diwali. Whereas Sanatana Dharma, commonly known as Hinduism, is one of the most ancient religions of the world that originated in India. Whereas Hinduism is the third-largest religion in the world, with more than 1 billion followers worldwide, representing 15% of the global population. Whereas approximately 4 million Hindus call United States as their home, including several thousand in Broward County and its municipalities. Whereas the Hindus celebrate numerous festivals throughout the year, but many during the months of October or November culminating in the celebration of Diwali. Whereas the Hindus worldwide reverently observe the Festival of Diwali, celebrating the victory of good over evil, and bringing light in the form of knowledge, serenity, hope, and universal well-being. Whereas Diwali falls on Friday, November 1st this year, in accordance with the lunar calendar, and brings together families, friends, communities, here in the U.S. and around the globe, promoting goodwill, peace, prosperity, and a shared sense of oneness. Whereas the U.S. Congress has officially passed unanimous resolutions recognizing the religious and historical significance of Diwali. Whereas Diwali is one of the most celebrated festivals of great significance to the Hindus, the Sikhs, the Jains, and Buddhists. Whereas for Sikhs, Diwali is celebrated as Bandi Chor Divas, or the day the sixth Sikh guru, Guru Hargoband, helped release 52 kings held in captivity by the Mughal emperor in an unparalleled testimony of shared sense of oneness. Whereas Jains, Diwali marks the anniversary of the attainment of Moksha, or liberation, by Mahavira, the last great teacher of the Jain Dharma. Whereas the Navar Buddhists, Diwali is commemorated as the day the great Emperor Ashoka embraced Buddhism as his faith. Whereas consistent with American values, Diwali signifies a special time of peace and serenity with the hope of building bridges of understanding and tearing down barriers of intolerance. Whereas the town of Southwest Ranches has notably benefited from the Indian-American and South Asian communities through the great family values they bring along with the commitment to tolerance, pluralism, inclusiveness, environmental consciousness, and continued excellence in science, medicine, technology, music, dances, yoga, and meditation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, does hereby recognize the significance of the Hindu Heritage Month and the Festival of Diwali with its message of tolerance, compassion, and the victory of good over evil, which resonates with the American spirit, and be it further resolved that the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida proudly expresses its deepest respect for the Indian-Americans and South Asian-Americans throughout the world and here in the town of Southwest Ranches community, and all those who celebrate the Hindu Heritage Month in October and the Festival of Diwali on November 1, 2024, and likewise encourages all the people of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, to join us in recognizing the contributions of all Hindus, Sikhs, Jains, and Buddhists active in all aspects of our vibrant economic and civic society dated this, the 24th day of October, 2024.
Thank you. Would you like to say just a few words?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the town council, town manager, town attorney, and city staff. Good evening. Namaste and Satshri Kal. My name is Raj Verma, and on behalf of Hindu Sikh, Jain, and Buddhist brethren, it's a great honor to accept tonight's Hindu Heritage Month and Diwali proclamation. I thank the town's leadership for bestowing this distinction on us. We have tonight a few members of our community to witness this privilege. As a quick overview, Hindus, Sikhs, Jains, and Buddhists in India celebrate no less than 40 different festivals throughout the year, with at least 12 during the month of October. Due to this reason, October has been designated as a Hindu Heritage Month. Because of the lunar calendar, Diwali this year will fall on November 1. November 1st. We accept tonight's proclamation with somewhat of a somber feeling as our hearts go out to the victims of the two wars and the hostages are still being held in captivity. If political solutions are going to be decided by wars and blatant act of terrorism, it would be the end of our civilization. As Hindus, we have suffered centuries of brutal invasion and ceded thousands of square miles stretching from Indonesia to Afghanistan. Yet, we have still learned to live and flourish with people of all faiths seeking no one's destruction. Against this backdrop and on the occasion of Diwali, we bring tonight a message of peace, building bridges, tearing down the barriers of intolerance, and oneness as mentioned in the proclamation. Thank you again, as we extend the greetings of Diwali into Hanukkah and Christmas for all.
Thank you.
May we have a picture?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Be honored.
Do I need it?
Thank you very much.
Well done on all the Indian things.
What's going to happen?
And then we have one final proclamation, which I thought was particularly important as well with drug issues. So is Romina here? Ah, there we, okay. That's fine, I just wanted to make sure you were here. Great. All right, if you could please go ahead and read the proclamation.
Proclamation for Red Ribbon Week. Whereas communities across America have been plagued with the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them. Whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy and drug-free lifestyle. Whereas government and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas the Red Ribbon Week, the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Quique Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty, and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. Whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. Whereas October 23 through 31st has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore, the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, does hereby proclaim October 23rd through the 31st, 2024, as Red Ribbon Week in the town of Southwest Ranches dated this, the 24th day of October, 2024.
Excellent, thank you. Romina, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Here you go.
I appreciate you coming out this evening.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and everyone on the council. I'm on behalf of Ms. Romina. I'm actually 16, so I'm the one in charge of our unit. I'm the one leading our group. And a little message is about our program is the Young Marines is a nonprofit youth organization for boys and girls from the ages of eight to the completion of high school. We have over 300 units across the U.S. and over 10,000 youth and 3,000 adult volunteers enrolled in our program. The mission of the Young Marines is to positively impact America's future by providing quality youth development programs for boys and girls that nurtures and develops its members into responsible citizens who enjoy and promote a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. It takes a community to raise children into leaders, and with your support in this proclamation, it shows our young Marines that the city of Southwest Ranches stands behind them and supports their efforts to spread the word to Just Say No. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Also, could we take a photo real quick? Could we take a photo, please?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
You're doing a fine job there. The whole time.
Put on the sound, right?
That's what you get when you get a professor.
Right off time, right?
You're hired.
You're hired, yep.
Quite a beautiful life.
Really?
No way.
Holy moly.
I did not.
Just double check.
See how polite he was?
Yes, ma'am.
Next item on our agenda is public comment. I want to make a public comment before we get into public comment. Obviously, we're at the very end of a very heated campaign. There are emotions out there on one side or the other. There's a lot of things flying around on Facebook and whatever. We're here to keep it civil. We're here, this is public comment, not public attack. And so I know that you all will follow that accordingly, and that's what I look forward to tonight. So thank you. If we can please proceed.
Sure, Mayor. We have seven people signed up for public comment tonight, starting with Speaker One is Melissa Pomalis. Apologize if I pronounced that wrong.
That's fine, don't worry about it.
Good evening to the town council. My name is Melissa Pomalis. I'm the Florida Area Leader for Arcadis' Resilience Water Business Area. I'm a resident of 2981 Hidden Hollow Lane, Davie, Florida. At the recommendation of our internal legal counsel for Arcadis, I would like to go ahead and read the letter that was directed to the town council on the 11th of October of 2024 on behalf of Arcadis, which I send to all town council members and evaluation committee members related to the comprehensive vulnerability assessment and the agenda item number 11 of the council September 26 past meeting. It reads, "This letter is in reference to the town of Southwest Ranches Council action on Agenda Item Number 11 in its meeting of September 26, 2024, denying the resolution to authorize an agreement with Arcadis U.S. Inc. for a comprehensive vulnerability assessment, such denial being based on a potential conflict of interest. Arcadis disagrees that it should be denied the opportunity to work with the town, but will respect the council's decision and take no further action with respect to RFQU 24-001 for the benefit of the town's constituents. As a foremost matter and for the record, there will be no conflict of interest nor a potential conflict if Arcadis were to perform the comprehensive vulnerability assessment. As noted in the meeting, the fact that Arcadis has performed studies for Miami, Dayton, Broward Counties with certain recommendations made pursuant to the direction of those clients has no relation to nor impact upon the requirements of RFQU 24-001. As was evident, no council members or public commenters were able to identify an actual or potential conflict with any measure of specificity. The council simply conceived of a concept and labeled as a conflict, arrived at its conclusion without legal support, and cited nothing more than optics. This characterization of a potential conflict without offering any material substantiation in Arcadis's view is a pretext to circumvent the requirements of the Florida Consultants' Competitive Negotiation Act and possibly by extension, the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protections funding grant to the town, as well as the town's own procurement manual, and award the contract to a bidder that was deemed less qualified by the town's Evaluation Committee for RFQU 24-001. Furthermore, it is important to point out that this action is not supported by any provision of the manual, although it was neither mentioned during the action of the town council nor cited in the public notice announcement of October 4, 2024. The town might claim authority under Section 2-223G1 of the manual, which provides that an organizational conflict of interest occurs," and I quote, "when the contractor is unable or potentially unable to provide impartial objective assistance or advice to the recipient due to the other activities, relationships, contracts, or circumstances, its circumstances. On this particular point, Arcadis reiterates that nothing about any of Arcadis's other activities would have impaired its ability to perform an objective comprehensive vulnerability assessment pursuant to the requirements of the RFQ. Again, mere optics do not constitute a conflict, and more broadly, the town council's unfounded decision is setting a dangerous precedent which undermines any perception of fairness and integrity for prospective contractors that might otherwise consider doing business with the town in the future. Nonetheless, and I would like to please request to finish the paragraph, nonetheless, in consideration of the potential implications that delay may have on the ability to the town to receive the grant funds necessary to complete this very important comprehensive vulnerability assessment, Arcadis accepts the town's decision to move forward in a different direction. While Arcadis believes that if it were to submit a protest, if it were to submit a protest, such protest would be successful for the reasons stated above, Arcadis has opted not to pursue it. A protest would neither serve the best interests of the town, which has clearly already made its decision, nor those of Arcadis. As a final and salient point, Arcadis emphasizes that it operates under strict ethical guidelines and a comprehensive code of conduct. These take precedence in everything Arcadis does, but especially when performing the critical work associated with assessing a municipality's water-related threats and vulnerabilities. In this area of professional services, there is no room for compromise, and Arcadis will never have allowed any outside influences to impact its work for the town had Arcadis been fortunate enough to perform it. Finally, Arcadis requests the opportunity to formally address the town council and that this letter be introduced for public record and discussed as an agenda item on the next town council meeting. Sincerely, Melissa Pomalis, Senior Vice President, Florida Area Leader, Resilience Water, Arcadis U.S. Inc. Thank you very much."
Thank you, Mayor. The next speaker is Carlos Martinez, followed by Marion Allen.
Good evening, Town Council and Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity...
Carlos, can you just turn the mic a little bit that way?
Yes. I wrote it down, so it flows a little better.
It works.
Because I'm a little emotional with this. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you today regarding the property located on 13900 Griffin Road in Southwest Ranches. As you know, we currently own the 40 acres parcel and are now in contract with the New Testament Baptist Church to purchase the remaining 43 acres. As you also aware, we have aligned a buyer and are in an active contract to sell and close on the entire 83-acre assembly. During the buyer's due diligence period, our town attorney has introduced an old settlement agreement associated with the property's previous owner, New Testament Baptist Church, and a buyer, Southwest Ranches Acquisition LLC. The agreement states, and I quote, "This agreement is strictly contingent upon the closing of the sale of the West 40 acres from New Testament Baptist Church to the buyer. We shall be a condition precedent to all other terms and conditions contained within this agreement. To clarify, a condition precedent, in leaker terms, it is a condition that must be met before a contract becomes effective or before an obligation arises. This settlement agreement, which hinges on the completion of the sale that never transacted, is being invoked in a manner that is jeopardizing my current contract and the future value of the property. The buyer in question, Southwest Ranches Acquisition LLC, executed the purchase agreement on April 10, 2016. In the case, the reliance of the document from 2018 is concerning as its conditions precedents were not met. And now eight years later, it has surfaced to hinder my sale. The implications of this document are significant. It is causing my buyer to reconsider his offer and potentially withdraw from the deal entirely. This is not just a setback for my company, but for the economic development of our community as we identified a user who meets all the zoning requirements for this land. I urge council to take a close look at the document. Multiple legal professionals have reviewed it and deemed it nonvalid. It is crucial that we not let outdated agreements from the past sabotage the progress of our town. Moreover, I believe it is in the best interest of the town to seek additional legal counsel in this matter. The current approach taken by our town attorney will potentially lead to a lengthy and costly court case that will burden taxpayers. We must prioritize the needs of our community. In closing, I ask for careful consideration of this issue. It is important to quickly realize that this document will lead to a lawsuit that will not benefit anyone other than the lawyers. Thank you for your attention, and I look forward to support in resolving this matter efficiently and quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos.
Marion Allen, you're next, followed by Melissa O'Daly.
Marion Allen, longtime resident of Sunshine Ranches, served on the board for Sunshine Ranches. Chris can't be here tonight, but I have some words to say to the council because I followed what has been proposed for this property. We had the most gorgeous freaking proposal several years ago. He was providing equestrian trails for us. He was providing beautiful foliage and a community that Sunshine Ranches 100% approved. One of your members, Mr. Gary Jablonsky, had an issue with that, and allegedly, his interference allegedly cost us the development, and we are still angry. Listen to me. Second proposal shot down. Third proposal shot down. It makes people say, why are they going after Carlos and preventing him from developing the property? Who's going to benefit if he loses that property? Has to sell it cheap. Are there carpetbaggers around here that are just waiting to jump on his property? People are talking, okay? Be careful of your decisions now because Sunshine Ranches approved that first deal. Secondly, I told you years ago, there is a movement to put high-density, low-income housing in Sunshine, in Southwest Ranches. This is federally mandated. Get the thing developed according to what we want quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion.
Melissa, followed by John Stephen Garotti.
I changed my mind. You guys don't ask my questions anymore.
No worries.
All right. Fellas, how you doing? John Garotti, 162nd Avenue. How are you, Debbie? Jennifer, I always forget her. We're at the end. We're right at the end of the little contested election we got going on, but you know what? It's okay. It's all a part of life. It's part of the process we have in the United States to vote whoever you want to vote for. There's been a lot of banter back and forth. There's a lot of pictures going around. You guys are making me famous, but you know what? It's okay. It's okay. It is what it is. Lots of fake profiles on social media, lots of nonsense, but you know, the voters are going to decide. Bottom line, that's why we are in the country we live in. Last time I was up here, I forgot to mention the name of the restaurant that I was trying to give props to because they're actually very, very tasty. It's Adrian Fish. They have a fantastic operation going on. They are friends of ours because we kind of know each other from the previous owner, so hats off to them and their family for making us eat well here. We needed a good restaurant. Mr. Martinez's property, that needs to go away. That needs to be solved. We, look, we have these proclamations, do the right thing, Hindu heritage munch, Hispanic heritage, but when it comes to stuff like this, the gentleman's a resident. Forget about profit, forget about loss. Let's figure things out. Everything with a delay costs money. In that realm of the world, that's huge money, and there has to be a solution. If the surrounding neighbors, which the HOA is, said okay, maybe somebody said no, but let's find a way to do it. You know, you can't just say no. There has to be some guidance, you know, and in everything we do. I just think it's common sense, and that's what I've run my campaign on since the beginning. We gotta have common sense. We've gotta be more neighborly. We have to be what that says up there, rural lifestyle, not just on postcards and commentary. Hi, Lourdes, forgot to say hi to my wife. I can't forget that. Another thing I wanted to mention, we had one of the most amazing events at Cielo Farms thanks to this company called Paws in Town. There was so many new residents that came out, even some of the older folks came out. It was absolutely spectacular. There was dogs rescued. Let me tell you something, to see that amount of people come out, no issues, no traffic issues, no parking issues, peace, quiet, these dogs were everywhere, indoors, outdoors, no barking. We actually adopted, not me, we performed probably two or three adoptions that day, and these dogs went to multi-multi-millionaires that came by and adopted a dog in our town. And we're going to do it next year again, and I was so proud to be part of that. Dave, I thought you were going to come by, but you know, I know we all have schedules. I saw Mr. Allbritton on the golf cart. I'm like, maybe they'll all show up, but you know what? He was on the sidewalk. He didn't pull in. It's okay. 10 more seconds, I request. I just want to say, you know, it's one thing to be upset with somebody, but let's be factual. Let's do the right thing amongst everyone here. You know, we have a lot of work to do in this town. We have a lot bigger problems than, I don't like this guy for what he did 30 years ago. I'm going on field trips next month, guys, at Hawks Bluff Fellowship. I take care of half of the dogs that go to that school, so don't worry about me. I'll be just fine. I'm getting older. I turned 50 this year, but I'm not going anywhere. This is just the preseason for me, so thank you guys for all the effort and all the experiences with you guys, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim Lasky, followed by-
Followed by John.
Lori, did you want to speak again or no? Okay, so Jim Lasky, and the final speaker is Debbie Green.
Jim Lasky, 5780 Southwest 188th Avenue. As you know, I've been scouring everywhere looking for yard waste, and I found it. We've got a dump, a yard waste dump, and the reason I call it a dump because it's uncontrolled composting at the highest degree. It extends from I-75 under the power lines all the way to Green Meadows, and it's flanked by drainage canals. Well, most anybody knows horse manure, if in masses, contains a lot of bad things in it, and if the stack in the mound, you might say, is approximately six feet over grade, right, and which is another six feet to the water, right, and it's almost a mile long and 100 yards wide, that's a problem, and it's going to take somebody with a lot of background to be able to figure out what the potential is there. I understand you can dump there for free. Well, we can't compete with that in the garbage business. I'm sure Mr. Bergeron would confirm that, but free, okay? And people just pull in there, there's a really nice guy at the front gate, the guard, I might say, and he waves to you. I said, I just wanted to dump some trash there, and he said, you got to go to the back. So I took a tour of the back, my usual kind of tour, okay, is really with maybe the worst intentions, but I never could find the guy at the back that I had to see to be able to dump there, and so I just turned around and drove back out. But the background is, the guy's a really nice guy. He's owned the property forever. FPNL bought it and gave him the right to farm there in perpetuity. So I would say FPNL needs to put in some sheet pilings all along that water there. That's the only way, I would guess, you could get a retainer up there fast enough, and I bet you that costs a million dollars or more, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Debbie?
Debbie Green, 5201 Southwest 199. I'm sure you're all aware, but it just came to my attention today. I guess there was a Broward County Commission meeting, and there's been some discussion of possible homeless temporary housing being built, which I believe, I could be wrong, but it sounded like it's the Broward County-owned property where they've been discussing the threat of possibly putting an incinerator at one point. So if it is that same property, I'm just, just to, you know, bring it to the front, and I'm sure you've all seen it, and I don't know if you, I think it just happened on Tuesday, that it just makes zero sense to put homeless facility out in that spot as we don't have a prevalent homeless population out West.
Not yet.
There's very little, if any, public transportation out here, so I don't know what urging you all or the power that the town has in that. I mean, it would be much better used, that site, as opposed to putting waste-to-energy or homeless temporary housing, to use that as a big, real recycling, reuse, composting facility.
Great, thank you. Excellent, thank you. Appreciate the public comment. Public comment is closed. Any board reports?
All right. Last night, we had a tremendous task force meeting, and we elected four new members to our board. And in fairness, we're going to give each of the members, every meeting, a chance to read the board minutes, and tonight, our first board member who's going to speak is John, who was selected unanimously, and every meeting, you're going to be introduced to a new board member, and we have a lot of agenda items that we voted on that we'd like to inform you of. Thank you.
I will speed read.
What, I'm sorry, say this again? I'm not, what board is this?
So it's the-
This is a Zero Waste Task Force.
And when was this meeting?
Last night.
Yesterday, for two hours, in the Grand Oaks Conference Room. So-
And this we voted on, and I have the board meeting here.
And I'm not going to speak off cuff. I'm going to read it and hand you copies of whatever you guys like. So, the Incinerator Task Force Board Report, you guys have called it the Zero Waste Broward Task Force. Sorry, okay. My name is John Steven Garotti, and I was elected unanimously to the board last night in the Grand Oaks Conference Room. I'm stuttering today. I would like to give a report about our grassroots task force board meeting yesterday evening. It was held at the town's large conference room, which Debbie Green was able to reserve for us from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We had a very productive two-hour meeting. There were 25 agenda items to discuss, and we were able to get through quite a few. We did table items that deserve more time to discuss in future meetings. We plan to meet at least twice a month or more if needed. Here are some of the highlights of our discussions and actions. Number one, the board voted unanimously to add four new board members to the existing group for a total of nine interim board members. One member is from the city of Weston, and three are from the town of Southwest Ranches. Presently, we are in the process of creating a formal mission statement, an organizational structure, and assigning responsibilities to members. As we build our membership, we will hold a vote for chairperson, vice chair, treasurer, and secretary. The board will explore and hold discussions about becoming a nonprofit organization so that it can apply for grants, receive donations, and do fundraisers to support its work, future campaigns, and other expenses. If a board member has a conflict of interest that goes against the vision and mission statement of the task force, the board voted unanimously to remove that person from the board. We do not want any pro-incinerator or thermal technology lobbyists on the task force. We do not approve of any technologies that are not defined under the definition of zero waste as per the Zero Waste International Alliance. Board members voted unanimously to decide on a name change from the current name of Zero Waste Broward Task Force to an organization name that aligns with the mission of this task force. Our main mission is to oppose all forms of incinerators and to advocate for scalable alternatives to incinerators and landfills. Our board members will submit new names for consideration by the board, and a vote will be taken to rename the task force. The name must be attached to a domain name for a future website to coincide all the Other reasons we decided on a name change for the task force is that there is now a town-sponsored Zero Waste Advisory Board, and name zero waste in both entities is redundant and confusing to the public. We have to distinguish between the advisory board and the task force and their purpose. If the proposed municipal solid waste trash incinerators are built in our backyards, we will be known as environmental justice communities in West Broward. An environmental justice community is a neighborhood or community that experiences a disproportionate amount of environmental hazards or reduced quality of life compared to other communities. These communities are often made up of marginalized groups such as people of color, low income, or people that live in rural areas such as our community here. If you live in an environmental justice community, your property values will be negatively impacted like the home values were devalued in the city of Doral. We here in West Broward have the right to equal environmental protection and to live in healthy communities. This task force welcomes new members to join from all South Florida cities, and we invite the Native American Indian tribes, Micasuki and Seminole Indian tribes, to join forces and speak on our task force as well. Our task force members are going to work together to put forth good ideas and coordinated strategies to achieve measurable results that will make a positive impact for South Florida, and particularly for Southwest Ranches, the city of Weston, city of Pembroke Pines, city of Millmar in western Broward County. Thank you for your time. If anyone has any questions for the task force, I'm here along with all the other members to answer any questions. John Steven Garotti, Incinerator Task Force Board Member. Thank you. I did five minutes perfectly.
Good, end of public comment. Oh, that's right. Any other board reports?
Someone speak on behalf of the Zero Waste Broward Task Force. So I'm going to start off. Somehow, this board is being taken to another place and being used for other purposes. This was not what was discussed last night. It was never discussed, and if someone's putting out minutes or notes of a meeting, we discussed that anything that went out went to everybody. This did not come to me. I'm not sure if, did you get them? Michael didn't get them either. I don't know if whoever else got them.
We were all in the same meeting.
Yes, we were. This, this, this is not, this wasn't the place for this. Now, our board reports, my board report, which I'm going to do right now, is to let everyone know that tomorrow morning, if you're able to attend, is the executive, the Broward Solid Waste Authority's Executive Committee meeting, 9:00 to 11:00, at the Government Center West off of Broward and University. I'm going to let everyone know that we have yard signs in the back, that if anyone has an interest in putting a no-incinerator yard sign, I have some in the back, so please feel free to take one, and the little, the feet things that it stands on. If they happen to all be gone, please come see me. I have them in the trunk of my car. There are some door hangers back there, so we're, you know, just trying to get more support and also to let everyone know that our next Zero Waste Task Force meeting will be November 13 at 7:00 p.m. at Town Hall. We will be presenting the movie, We're All Plastic People Now, which I think some people traveled, you know, up north in the county to see it, and we wanted to bring it here because we've heard it's very impactful. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. No, I think we've gone through it. Any other board reports? Seeing none, board reports are closed. All right, council member comments?
Yeah, hopefully I won't get my head taken off. Just mention a few things. Some things have already been mentioned, just going to reiterate it. First off, what's going on in town? We have the December Holiday Light Contest coming up. Entries are due in by the beginning of December. We have Trick or Treat at the Barn this Saturday from 6:00 to 9:00. Starts at 6:00, obviously, I just said that. If you could, please show up with candy and kids and costume. There's all kinds of trophies and whatnot that's going to be given out. It's usually a pretty fun event, and there's usually anywhere from 200 to 400 people there at that. Just a matter of note, in March, on the 8th, is Water Matters Day at Treetops Park. December, lucky we got her, she does a fantastic job with that, and so I just want to mention that. We also have the Country Fair and Carnival in January 16 through 20 on Martin Luther King Weekend, so we've got that. Then we have the town birthday party, our silver anniversary, 25 years, on the 7th of June at 10:00 a.m. The parade starts and ends at the barn, and there'll be activities going on all day for And good news, the DMV Flowmobile is going to be back in November. It'll be the day before Thanksgiving, the 27th, from 10:00 to 2:00. Call Deborah to make an appointment, as usual. Apparently, they're done using it up in the hurricane area, and I've spoken to some people up there, and they're really fast-tracking the cleanup and the debris, so it was really nice to hear that. A lot of things have been reopened up there, and go from there. There's, David, you've got a memo here, and I have it in my notes. I didn't see this until a few minutes ago, but the sites which Debbie Green mentioned about the homeless village on 198th and Sheridan, that's something we need to take very, very seriously and remove it off of the county map or state of mind, however you want to say it. It seems the commissioners might be leading to something called the Shaw Properties, which are located over by Dana Beach. I think we need to encourage that, and we probably need to bring back some sort of a letter or a resolution drafted by the council, you know, in favor of that. I don't know how the rest of you guys feel about that, but I'm just going to throw it out there, and then you guys can all talk about it, you know, and go from there. So, and I'm going to go ahead and close out with that.
Great, thank you, Gary.
Mayor, I've got two things.
Okay.
Actually, maybe three things. First of all, you know it's early voting. It's November the 3rd, so we do get a day off on the 4th before the actual election day is the 5th. It's from 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night, seven days a week, so make sure you get out and vote. I will say that I am happy to hear that we are showing that we are all plastic people. I had the opportunity to see that about a month ago, and I walked out of there with my mouth open, not realizing just how much plastic has affected our lives. If you come and see that, I guarantee you'll walk out of here and you won't touch another plastic bottle. You'll be drinking out of these with no plastic lids, I'm telling you. It is an amazing documentary. The gentleman that produced it spent, I think, close to five years or so, and if you get a chance to come see it. And lastly, we had the opportunity to drive around with the Rural Arts Board and judge the lights in town. It's our first year, thanks to David, that was introduced. We had seven entries. One of them dropped out, but we saw six diverse homes decorated. Some were all handmade, some were statues, but you have to get around and see these six homes that we have in our community. They are really nice to see. The winners will be receiving a trophy Friday night, I guess?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night, all right. So as we do for Christmas, Santa Claus rides around on a fire truck. I don't think we'll have a fire truck, and I'm not sure if a pumpkin will be riding around giving out the trophies, but if you get a chance to get around, we'll post the winning people- the winning people. We have some very talented people in town, very talented. So, it was a great idea, and maybe next year it'll grow just like the lights do. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Jim. David?
Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Let me begin, um, some early issues that, uh, thanks for everybody sticking around, coming out tonight. It's good to see full crowd. Uh, you know, the, uh, Halloween celebration going on Saturday night over at the barn, Sunshine Ranches, just want to let everybody know Sunshine Ranches HOA has kicked in $200 to assist Roca with that event. Um, that is the maximum amount that Sunshine Ranches HOA can approve without a quorum vote. The board actually approved that expenditure within the parameters of the bylaws, and they did kick in $200 to assist with that event tomorrow night. Now, um, sitting on the back table back there is that article that's been discussed by Debbie and Gary. Uh, it's tied, it came out on the 23rd, and it's from the Sun Sentinel, and it says, "Where Will Broward's Homeless Be Housed? A Look at Six Offered for Consideration." The article begins, "Six locations in Broward County have been proposed as sites to consider for easy-to-build temporary homes for the homeless." Now, scroll down a little bit for brevity. Um, the first number-one location says, "A 61-acre parcel near US 27 at 19801 Sheridan Street in unincorporated Broward near Pembroke Pines. It is considered the largest chunk of undeveloped land owned by Broward County and once considered a possible site for an Amazon distribution warehouse. It's heavily looted, uh, heavily wooded, and land clearing would be required." This is right next to us, folks, and when I saw this, I was like, this cannot happen. And I, I spoke to Mr. Bergeron in the front, handed him the article. Hopefully, Mr. Bergeron's contacts can help us with this, but I think as a council, we need to move forward with a resolution opposing this if we can, if I can get, um, the rest of council members to feel that this is appropriate, we can have a discussion on this.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'm going to weigh into it, so let's, uh, here's, here's my feeling, if you're going to, that I absolutely oppose this. However, I want to understand what's going on here first, right? This came out like on Tuesday.
Yep.
And we're all kind of scrambling to respond one way or the other. I don't know if this goes to Keith, I don't know if this goes to Russell, I don't know who this goes to, but we got to find out what's going on first before we respond. I don't want to respond out of ignorance. I mean, we can do a resolution to oppose it, I think we all agree with that, I have no issue with that, but I think it's bigger than just a resolution. We need to know what's going on, what's the impetus behind us, what is the way to address this in a way that it makes sure that, you know, this does not impact our area? So I think it's, I don't, I don't oppose a resolution, but I think it's bigger than that. That's all.
What's interesting is this article actually quotes Broward Mayor Nan Rich. She told the county commissioners Tuesday afternoon urging them to move the project along, quoted, "I'm trying to get across the sense of urgency." This, this does not coincide with anything that Southwest Ranches stands for. So, um, I guess we can begin drafting an ordinance opposing this if everybody's.
Well, a resolu, resolution.
Resolution, resolution.
Just to call it out, though, there's, uh, they comment on using the Sheridan site as well, right, right near your industrial park, Ronnie, so you may want to jump into that. I don't know if you want a homeless center right, right next to Sheridan, so.
They won't make great neighbors.
Yeah.
Anyway, let's not go back and forth. Let's, let's.
I just wanted to bring that up.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. All right. So, and we can ask Keith to draft it up, a resolution on this?
Um, is there?
No, no issue.
Yeah, is there consensus on that? Anybody have an issue with that?
You okay opposing this?
I think we're, I think, I think we're in agreement with that.
Uh, during a recent conversation with Russell, I, um, reminded about an issue I spoke with a few months ago about a fundraising issue for the scholarship fund, and I'd like to have, um, some kind of a form of a Texas Hold'em tournament, and I think that would be really cool, uh, to have in the town, either here or in the barn, uh, where, um, have a little Texas Hold'em tournament, and, uh, proceeds would be, uh, given to the scholarship fund to further advance the education of our students in the town. Uh, another issue that I brought up, um, last year, I was invited to several holiday parties, uh, in, around, in December, and some of those required, said, "Bring a gift, bring a toy." Well, I bought several of the toys off of Amazon, I had them sitting around, and then some of these parties canceled, and issues came up, canceled parties. So I went ahead and took the toys that I had purchased, brought them over to Joe DiMaggio. When I walked in and left those, left those toys for those kids over there, it really was a heartwarming experience, and, um, I asked Russell if there's a way that the town could actually go forward with the town, uh, holiday toy drive, and he asked me to reach out to Joe DiMaggio and, um, see if there's an outreach coordinator for this and, uh, something that we can move forward with, with the town. I think it's a really, really cool effort. Um, so it's something I'm going to try to work with. Uh, and, and the last, I want to say October 22nd, my phone received a text, and it was from a candidate, and I look at these things, and I kind of like, okay, whatever it is. But there was something that really concerned me about this text, because there was a quote that says, "Our bond money is being mismanaged." That concerns me because, sitting up here, um, all five of us have a strong belief in, um, fiscal management of this town, and I was so concerned that I reached out to Emile, and I said, "Is, is, can you explain this?" So I, I want to ask Emile a couple of questions on this thing, if you don't mind.
To the mayor, no.
Okay. Now, in 2016, we purchased the bond, correct? Or we got the bond?
We actually issued the TD 2016 Series Improvement Revenue Bond for the acquisition of the CCA land, um, for $7,750,000.
Okay. And what was the interest rate on that?
Uh, 3.25%.
And was the payments for interest only?
The agreement was to actually, um, was interest-only payment for the first five years, and the interest would start during the duration of the loan, which was 2036 at that rate that I just mentioned.
Okay, so the maturity date was what again?
2036.
Okay. Um, now, what happened in 2021 regarding, regarding this?
Well, since it was an interest-only, uh, it was to the best interests of the town to refinance that loan, which essentially saved the town, uh, roughly about $666,000 for the duration of the first 10 years, since the loan had a call date or has a call date, uh, in 2031, and a saving of $746,000 through the duration of the loan, if we were to actually, uh, keep it, um, through 2036. And that interest rate was 1.92%.
Okay, so the, when we refinanced this loan in 2021, it had the same maturity date?
Yes.
Okay. And the interest rate was once again what?
1.92%.
Okay. Um, and now, I, I, I'm just kind of, is there any possibility for mismanagement of this money in your department?
The loan, when it was originally issued, um, we abided by the resolution and the requirements of the resolution in 2016. Uh, the same thing was actually processed and applicable in 2021, so we abided by the resolution and its direction.
Okay. So, so the bond is being properly managed?
Yes. Um, the loan has been paid biannually, two payments, um, in, in November and May of each fiscal year, and it has been gradually going down to the point that, um, during the fiscal year 2023 audit of financials, the balance was 6.8, and we estimated that balance to be, um, in 2024, 6.3. That's a reduction of principal, and it has been in compliance with the bank covenant. The town has followed, um, the requirements through the loan to the point that when we refinance it, we, um, utilize the same bank, uh, as the original one.
And when we have the annual audit, does the auditors look at this?
They do, because there is a covenant, um, that for payment of the loan, uh, ad below in taxes should now be utilized to cover those payments, and that is reviewed during the audit on a yearly basis, and is also sent to the bank, um, or our, um, financial statements are sent to the bank after the audit is completed, and they have been in compliance through the duration of this loan.
Okay. Um, so I, I don't see that our bond money is being mismanaged, so, um, and I thank you, Emile, for assisting me with these questions. Mr. Mayor, I'm finished.
Thank you, David.
Just a couple of quick comments. On the upcoming ballot in a week and a half, we have, uh, five charter amendments, and some of them are, you know, not that important for the future of the town. One of the examples of, of, uh, of those are, um, we want to make sure it's clear and it's in our charter that we are an agricultural and a questioning community. Now, does that require us to do anything differently? Probably not, but it makes a point going forward and in the future. Uh, we have another, another charter amendment out there that, uh, and these were worked on last, uh, two years ago by a charter review committee we, we put together to come up with recommendations. Another one was kind of a legal concern, and that one, essentially, the way our charter reads right now is, um, anything that we change requires a 60% vote. Now, a good lawyer could say, if it's 61%, it doesn't pass, if it's 59%, it doesn't pass. So we, we're changing that to something very simple, at least 60%. But the fifth one is very important, and actually David came up with it. We had a meeting about a year, maybe a year and a half ago, where, um, it was proposed that we made some changes to proactive code enforcement. I don't remember all the specifics, but I think one of them was if people planted bushes in their swale, you know, that, that could be a proactive code enforcement, and there's some good reasons to do that, and there's probably a lot of not as good reasons, you know. One of the things that were brought up is that we have a lot of equestrians, you start planting bushes across the swale, people can't ride their horses. But what that, that exercise did was it brought out a crowd of people. There were two or three things that were being discussed, and this room was standing room only. And I think what it showed the council is that, you know, our people like things the way they are. They don't want any more proactive code enforcement. We only have five items out there right now that are proactive, and there are things like illegal filling of property. Why? Because you flood the neighboring properties, but there's five out there. And what we're looking to change in the charter is if some, if the council wants to make something proactive, in other words, code enforcement can just pull over and cite the residents or start talking to the residents on their own, uh, that, that's what proactive is. Reactive is somebody has to call, somebody has to make a complaint, code enforcement cannot take the initiative on it. So what we did was, uh, and this again was David's idea, it takes a, no different than if we're going to change zoning or land use, it takes a 5-0 vote of the council to change something from being reactive to proactive, okay? And that's important. I would encourage you to vote yes on that because, uh, do we really need more to be proactive? Some people think we do. Some people are actually running on that concept, but in any case, uh, I'd encourage you to vote yes, not no, yes, because we want a 5-0 vote. Excuse me? Keeps our freedom as residents. Lots of people do all kinds of interesting and fun things around their property, with their property, that they've paid good money for. Um, it would take five of us to vote yes to switch something from being reactive to proactive. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. All right. Um, I want to touch on a couple of items. Uh, the first one is, I want to touch on, uh, the property that Carlos spoke about earlier. I'll be honest with you, I'm, I'm pretty frustrated with that as well. Um, we have seen, um, multiple meetings with the Sunshine Ranches homeowners association where they have gotten excited about potential, um, uses for that property, buyers that can do different things that, um, we've gotten excited about, and for one reason or another, they are, they, they can't come to fruition. And, um, what, this last one that came around, um, I was very excited about it. There was a lot of open fields, there were equestrian, um, there was an equestrian element there to teach equestrians there. Um, there was just, it was basically open fields and, and classrooms for, um, individuals to, uh, to learn, students. And, um, and obviously, we wanted to run that by the HOA to get them to be able to weigh in on it. Maybe there's, I don't pretend to know all the ins and outs, so I certainly always defer to them and their thoughts and any concerns that they have that I may not have thought of, um, and, um, but there are issues with, in, and the thing that, I guess the thing that gets me here is I, through all those previous potential options, this, a new, now a, a new issue came up that I had not heard of before about, uh, something left over from a previous agreement, that, to the best of my knowledge, did not even come into reality. It could have if, if, if the, if the property owners had developed in a particular way in a particular timeframe, but they didn't do that, and so it doesn't seem to make sense to me. So I'm, I'm not here to figure it out tonight, but what I am here to say is that we owe it to the property owner, we owe it to Sunshine Ranches as a whole, we owe it to frankly the taxpayers of Southwest Ranches, who are going to benefit from this when it finally gets developed, to give the property owner a clear view into exactly what, if any, the restrictions are, so that he can present this to future buyers clearly and without anything hanging over his head to be able to, um, be able to finally develop and move forward with this. I personally want to be involved in those meetings. Um, I think, I personally think, uh, I mean, obviously, I want to be there, I think the property owners needs to be there, and frankly, I think we probably need a couple, an attorney from our town, an attorney from, from the property owner to get together so that we can all come to agreement, and I want it in a form that even a non-legal person such as myself can understand the final results of what we need to do. Carlos deserves, Carlos has been a great neighbor. Um, he has consistently, um, taken each one of these proposals and vetted it out through the community, and, um, I believe we owe it to him to give him a clear path of, of, of what, what is available on that property, um, and, and if there's any disagreement, to be able to work that out, hopefully without it turning into, I do not want to see another lawsuit. We have way too many lawsuits, and I think we have a real opportunity right now to get together, um, and resolve this once and for all before it gets out of control. So I would strongly urge us to do that and set that up and make that happen. And then the last thing I want to touch on, and I, I kind of already spoke about it, but I'll just reiterate it, um, is the homeless. I did want to touch on that. Um, I think that we need to, um, do some investigating with Broward County Commissioners. Um, I don't mind giving Nan a call, I, I speak with her often, and, um, and I don't mind making that call, if that's the right way to go. You know, I want to know the lay of the land before I make that conversation, before I make that call, and I feel like there's more behind the scenes that we don't know about. Let's find out what that is, let's investigate it, let's make a plan, and let's work it to the best interests of our town.
This has kind of exploded. I mean, you remember when we were over at Long Pine Key?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I was sitting next to the mayor of Plantation, and there was only one site in consideration.
I know. We got to find out what's going on.
Exactly.
Yeah, we got to find out what's going on.
This is blowing up in two, three weeks.
Correct. Right. We, we need to, right. Exactly. All right. So with that, we'll close. Council member comments, legal comments.
Sure, Mayor, um, working backwards on a couple of things that were said, as it relates to the potential use of the county's prison site for homeless or affordable housing, Senator Rich is a huge advocate for trying to promote housing, Senator Rich is a huge advocate for trying to promote affordable housing throughout Broward County. Broward County needs something like 7,000 units a month or something like that, just to keep up with the demand for people who need it. I called today Ralph Stone, who many of you may know as head of Housing for Broward County. He actually knew absolutely nothing about the article. I had to show it to him because he had no idea what I was even talking about. I think what happened was that at a county commission meeting, what I'm being told, there was a discussion about surplus county land and where additional housing opportunities could go, and they were looking at surplus lands. The reality is, is that that parcel is so remote, so far from mass transit, so far from jobs, so far from health services, mental services and the like, that it is highly, highly doubtful that that could ever be utilized for that purpose. In addition to that, and this is where the pros and cons are, Mayor, and I mentioned this to you earlier, if there was a push to put it there, it automatically would kill the incinerator out there as well, because you can't put a homeless center directly next to an incinerator. So the reality is, is I don't think the homeless is going to see the light of day at that location. Miami-Dade County is buying up old hotels and turning them into homeless centers right now, which is why Broward County is similarly looking for things to do. But I will continue to monitor it. I have no problem calling Senator Rich tomorrow. I doubt that she even thought of that property, you know, it was just in the list of surplus lands that the county had. I will touch real briefly on Mr. Martinez's property, because I think there's confusion somewhere, and I don't know where this confusion is. And again, as the mayor said, it's almost like the game of telephone. We got sued by the church when the town council changed the code to limit the square footage of industrial or community facility that could be built within the town. The town tremendously reduced the amount of community facility that could be built on properties, and as a result, we were sued by the church claiming a violation of federal law where you're infringing on their religious rights. And in addition to that, they want it to be built more than our code actually provided. In a settlement agreement, which is called the consent decree, it's not a normal settlement agreement, and by the way, I never gave it to anyone, it's in a federal judgment, so it's in court, I've never even been asked for it. I actually asked their council for a copy because I hadn't seen it in so long. But in a consent decree, a federal judge has ruled that agreed with our settlement of the case, which basically did two things. One, it gave them a year to decide if they wanted to build housing on 40 of those acres, and if not, that ability to build housing went away, but they actually kept a square footage limitation on the other 40 acres of the property. The irony is, is the agreement was drafted so that on the other 40 acres, they got more square footage than our code currently allowed. That's what the settlement did. It gave them more square footage, not less than our code allowed. So if Mr. Martinez is desirous of saying this agreement is no longer full force and in fact it wants to kill it, I don't think the council is going to have a problem with that, because it actually will reduce the amount of square footage that could be built on the overall property, because he'd have to comply with the current code condition. It's a, as I told his council, it's a decision of our council, I'm not making a legal opinion whether or not you want to kill it or not. I could debate from today to tomorrow whether it's still in effect or not, but it's irrelevant at the end of the day, because at the end of the day, he needs to propose a plan that needs to come before the commission, the council. If the council approves that plan, any agreement can be modified to match whatever the council approves. I'm not taking that position, you know, as to what you all will eventually want to see out there.
Right. And we're not asking you to do that. What we are asking to do is to provide clarity, which I believe you just did, for what can be put there. And I don't see anything that you just said that would have any way impacted in a negative way the last proposal that was there.
I don't know, I never saw a last proposal, so I apologize. Jeff Cadens told me that.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, I understand that. So that's why we need clarity, because Mr. Martinez needs to be able to speak to his potential buyers with that same clarity of what can go there and what can go there, and what cannot go there, because there was a lot of other stuff in that document that was sent to him that would have made it impossible for that buyer to do what they wanted to do there. So we need to get on the record that all that other stuff does not apply, and that it's only that restriction in size that still applies, which was what I thought, frankly, after I read the document. And we need to come make sure we got an agreement with that so that we can move forward with this property.
And absolutely, I have no issue with that. I just wanted to clarify that the removal of that agreement actually lessens his development rights.
You know, that's, that's not where I think anybody's going.
But another point I want to mention is that, once he proposes a site plan and submits it for town approval, that's when you all can make the decision overall, do we want this or not?
Hundred percent, hundred percent. But before anybody's going to go through all that expense to do a site plan, they need to have some assurance that what they're proposing is going to fall within the limits of what can be done there.
And just in response to that, I know they're working diligently with Jeff Cadens, that is not a legal matter.
It's not.
And they're working with Jeff, and met with them a couple of weeks ago, he told me about their proposed plan.
Okay. And I'd still like to get together with everybody so that we can get this get in paper. I'm going to give you one minute, Carlos, one minute.
Yeah, just in response to the site plan, just in response to the site plan, we had a very accelerated contract, trying to close before the end of the year. So they only had 30 days due diligence and closing 15 days after. So they need to feel comfortable enough that they can do what they want to do without having the site plan approval. So the document was a little bit unclear, if we can clear that up, make them feel comfortable, we can put this behind us before the end of the new year.
Let's get a meeting on the books next week.
All right. And then finally, Mayor, I just want to say publicly, my thoughts and prayers are with the city of Fort Lauderdale and the Ansbro family. Tom Ansbro, their city attorney and longtime attorney in Fort Lauderdale, passed suddenly yesterday, and I just wanted to give my thoughts for the record.
Thank you, Keith. All right, administrative comments.
Mayor, I'm just going to ask for your indulgence in moving item 18 on this agenda to be discussed after item 21, which is the discussion of the ARPA allocated project.
Do I have a motion to move that item?
Motion to second.
A motion and a second. Is there any objection to that? Okay, that's good. All right. Item number 12.
This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the code of ordinances to create a new section of the town code entitled Meritless Code Compliance Calls, providing for a service charge as a penalty for more than three meritless code compliance calls, providing for penalties, providing for inclusion in the town's code of ordinances, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. This was approved on first reading, October 16, 2024.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item?
Yeah.
Okay.
So our last meeting, we talked about looking at this in terms of, just phones on, you know, we'll limit it to 12 months. I talked to Russell, and I found out how widespread this type of abuse is. And, you know, in a lot of other areas in our code enforcement, when people continue to abuse, we have progressive penalties, or fees in this case. When I looked at this, yeah, okay, we give them three and 12 months, a fourth, they get a $250 fine. What happens with the fifth, the sixth, the seventh? So what I would propose is that for the first three, if you do it, you know, if you exceed, it's $250. The next three, it goes to 500. When we go up to $1,000, just continue to increase with every three. And above that, leave it to the discretion of the magistrate, because I think the magistrate, and Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, but the magistrate has a limitation on code fees at $5,000?
If it is determined to be a life safety issue, it could be 5,000. Quite frankly, for this, the limit would probably be 500.
500?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd rather see it be higher than lower in this case, because of the amount of abuse that goes on. I mean, we got some shady people in town that use this as a weapon. I'm finding out that we have a resident in town that the neighbor's calling because his rooster crows in the morning. We like roosters in Southwest Ranches. So I guess my proposal would be then, I guess, to increase it up to $500.
So the first three are?
250.
Well, the first three are basically, okay, zero.
Well, is it the fourth?
Yes, the fourth one then, fourth through the sixth, fourth, four, five and six would be 250, and then everything beyond that would be 500.
500, yeah.
Okay.
So the next, so 1, 2, 3 is?
It's gratis.
Done. 4, 5, 6 is 250. Number 7 starts 500?
Yeah.
Okay, not 7, 8, 9, but just 7.
No, no, 7 on off.
7. So if you hit number 7, that's it.
And just keep repeating it 500 if that's what's necessary.
Okay, 500 for everyone after that.
Because honestly, if you're that upset at your neighbor that you're constantly calling, $250 may not make a difference to you, it might be worth your while to create the hassle for the person that you're directing your anger at.
Yeah, I just want to understand the structure.
Sure, yep, sure.
Lay it out.
So that's my recommendation here.
Thank you, Bob. Is there?
Bob, is there, is that still in the 12-month period? You're talking about the 12-month period?
Well, that's another piece. I mean, do we want to limit this to 12 months, I mean, for the abuse?
I think we do. I think we do. I think that, yeah, you know, there are some that, you know, definitely abuse it, and then there's some that do it by mistake. And we want to be able to, you know, restart and give everybody an opportunity to do the right way.
Yep, yep, good.
So the 12 months is, okay.
Yeah.
Good, okay.
So who proved the motion? You made the motion, do you?
I'll modify it to what we just discussed.
I second it.
On the escalating fees.
Excellent. Okay, so the motion has been modified. Any further council discussion on the item? Seeing none, any public discussion on the item?
I think you know who I am by now. I think just the opposite in some instances. What if you had somebody you were complaining about, very detailed, very understanding of the facts, with two consultants, and you spent a lot of money, all right, and everybody's ignoring the simple facts? I've only complained about one person in this town, all right? Does not know how to tell the truth, has been convicted of not telling the truth, which precludes you from getting a state license or a state permit. It's called the Truthfulness Act. It's in the Agriculture Section of Florida statutes. But I've been going nuts with this woman, and I really want to get you to be, make a decision on things like what the final grade is after five years of the property and it's flooding neighbors on both sides who have been before you, and some of you have been copied. I'm sure many of you have been copied by now. I've blown up your emails over this subject, but let's throw that one in there, too. Thank you very much.
John Garrati, 162nd Avenue. I think to that, to this discussion tonight, I think you should add, if it's coming from a sitting councilman or anybody that's involved in the city that lives here, I think you should penalize them double or triple, or some sort of a specific difference than a regular resident. Why? Because we've done many, many records requests, and I'm not going to say what's coming out of them, but some of the people sitting up on this council, I was a victim of one of those by my own councilmen, so I think some component to that should be, you know what? If you're sitting up there, that's a privilege. You guys got elected, so you got to hold, it's not a game. Code enforcement is a serious thing. Yes, if a resident abuses it, of course, this is a good idea, because it could be crazy, right? But what happens if you guys do something wrong? Shouldn't there be a provision to hold you guys accountable? Because if I was sitting up there, I would want that. I want to hold my feet to the fire. That's what I got. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yeah.
Scott Erdely, 58th Street. I might go just a little bit over, and I'm sorry, I have a sinus infection, so please afford me the time to go through it. So you guys might as well name this the Erdely Ordinance, right? Because you guys refer to us so many times without mentioning our names while you sit up here at council meetings and other places. Keith, you falsely claim that we filed over 100 complaints against our neighbor, when in reality, it's 20 to 30-ish, because the town has failed and continues to fail to enforce this ordinance, which disrupts our quality of life. The same number of complaints have been made against us, which of course, you conveniently leave out. Any complaint you failed to cite is not meritless, but rather your decision not to. The town knows very well about filing meritless complaints. In fact, the town itself has filed over 30 complaints to our Internal Affairs Division, which found everything to be baseless and no policy violations. So who should I send the fine to when you guys continue to make these meritless complaints to my work? Who do we send a fine to when code enforcement cites someone for doing their, without doing their due diligence and without merit? Three times, we have been cited for an ordinance violation without merit. Once, we were cited for a setback violation, saying our back garage wasn't properly permitted, and they had, we had to demolish it. It took me five minutes to look online and find that it was permitted, but we were cited by code enforcement. We were cited by code enforcement under a Broward County ordinance for barking dogs in an attempt by code enforcement to ignore the town ordinance that exempts domesticated animals and livestock, telling us that we had to get rid of our dogs. The last was a meritless light violation, which showed, we showed the ordinance to code, and it was quickly unfounded. All three times, had we not done the town's job for you, we would have been severely fined. The administration in this town holds none of their own accountable for the actions that they take. Who will decide what is meritless? I know it's you, Keith. But if a clear violation of an ordinance exists, and you refuse to accept it and then enforce it, does that make the complaint meritless? You all have admitted to bypassing Florida State statute and filing code complaints on behalf of other residents. So who takes the responsibility for those if they're meritless? Is it the council members, or is it the residents? Everyone sees what you're trying to do. People are already afraid of retribution from their neighbors. Now you're making them fear retribution from the town. Can any of you provide reference about any other town or city that has passed such a subjective ordinance? I tried to research it, I wasn't able to find any town that had it. I'm sure you'll pass this ordinance as one of your last actions as current council, but please know that Melissa and I will never stop fighting for our quality of life using the town services that we pay for. Thank you.
Thank you. Public session closed. Any further comment? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mayor Bray Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right. Item number?
13.
13.
Item 13 is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the future land use map of the town of Southwest Ranches, comprehensive plan by changing the designation of approximately 59 acres from agricultural to U.S. Highway 27 business, generally located on the east side of U.S. Highway 27, between the C-11 canal to the north, Sterling Road to the south, and Menora Gardens Cemetery to the east, providing for transmittal to the Broward County Planning Council and State Land Planning Agency, requesting recertification by the Broward County Planning Council and providing for an effective date. This is application PA-20-8.
Mayor, this comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the local planning agency. As always, the discussion comments, everything else that were heard earlier tonight are incorporated by reference.
Thank you, Keith. Is there a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the council on this item? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on this item?
Noel Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. I was talking to Mr. Bergeron before the meeting started. This has been ping pong ball between the council, Bergeron Properties, and the Comprehensive Plan Board for 12 years, and has finally come to a resolution, and urge all of you to pass it this evening, and let's get on with it. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, Neil. Any further public comment?
I'm in shock.
John Garrati, 162nd Avenue. Well, this is loud. All right. U.S. 27, the new zoning change, right? I say that if you are going to do that, which I don't think it's a bad idea, you know, you got to develop that area, and we need and we need some commercial, especially out there. Now, wouldn't it be wise for the bordering properties that are connected basically by either a ditch or a fence line or a canal or whatever it is to be offered that same choice? Because that is a very industrial area, guys. That is, there are homes around there, but there's many, many agricultural businesses and home-based businesses. So, I think if you're going to do that, if you have a bordering property, it doesn't have to be decided tonight, but consider it. You know, I mean, it's, what if that person says, you know what, I don't want to live next to what's going to be on U.S. 27. I want to sell it. But that's what I wanted to say on that. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. Any further council comment? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kazinsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item number fourteen, please.
Item fourteen is an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, rezoning approximately fifty-nine acres from A-1 Agricultural State District to U.S. Highway 27 Planned Business District, generally located on the east side of U.S. Highway 27 between the C-11 Canal to the north, Sterling Road to the south, and Menora Gardens Cemetery to the east, providing for conflict and providing for an effective date. This is application RZ-24-23.
Mayor, as with the last one, comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Keith.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any council comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on this item? Seeing none, if you please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kazinsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right.
Congratulations.
Item number fifteen, please.
Item number fifteen is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with Chenmore and Associates in the amount of $200,000 to prepare a comprehensive vulnerability assessment, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing for an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Is there any discussion on this item from the council? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on this item? Seeing none, public discussion closed. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kazinsky? Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Item number sixteen, please.
Item number sixteen is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the First Amendment to the Agreement with Citron Cooperman and Company, LLP, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute the amendment and providing an effective date.
Motion approved.
Do you have a second?
Second. Third.
I have a motion and a second on the item. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, any public discussion on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kazinsky? Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number seventeen, please.
Item number seventeen is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to ETR LLC in the amount of $495,007.0 by piggybacking off the State of Florida Sheriff's Association contract, FSA 23 VEF-17, to purchase a new fire rescue unit for the Town of Davie Fire Rescue pursuant to the town's public safety agreement with the Town of Davie as delineated within Resolution 2023-066 and providing for an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the item. This is an element that is part of our current contract with Davie, so this is something that we've been planning on and working towards for, since we signed the contract with them. Is there any further, yeah, go ahead, Bob.
I talked to Russell about maybe painting this something other than Davie yellow.
Oh, really?
We're not sure about that part yet, but at least we want to have, you know, Southwest Ranches on it somewhere since we're paying half a million bucks and maybe the town seal somewhere.
I think that's a reasonable.
Maybe on the front.
It's not an unreasonable request and a part of a discussion that I've already had with the town administrator for Davie. And they are definitely receptive to that, for sure.
Good. Doesn't have to be red, but I'd love it to be red.
Yeah, that's, thank you, Bob. That's a great, great idea. Any further council comment?
Do I need to include that in the motion?
No, not yet. Any public discussion on the item? We're giving you your exercise tonight, Jim.
I assure him. All right, that's a hell of a good idea. If we're spending that kind of money for a fire truck and we can't make it look like our fire truck, even though the Davie guys are driving the truck, I mean, come on, this is too easy to figure out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Any further public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Still yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kazinsky? Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Item number nineteen, please.
Item number nineteen is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with East Coast Builders and Developers in the amount of $2,617,000.0 for construction of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA-funded Southwest Meadows Sanctuary Park Improvements Project, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing for an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, David. Thank you. All right, so I think we will have some discussion on this item.
Yep.
This, Russell, why don't you walk us through this?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. There's quite a bit that we want to talk about with this particular one. So, this is the culmination of a lot of hard work, a lot of direction from council, and a lot of hard work by staff. We went out to bid and working with our architects, CPZ. If you recall, when we were talking about this with them, they estimated that the base bid for the project would come in at approximately $1.8 million. And they thought that they were being very conservative, and we were hopeful that the amount might come in a little bit less than that. Unfortunately, market conditions, you know, we had to put it out for bid, and what the market bears is what the market bears. And it actually came in at $1.85 million, so $1,850,000 for the base bid. So, our architects were pretty much spot on, even though they were taking a conservative approach. What I want to walk you through is that the $1.85, $1,850,000 is the base bid. We also had several ad alternatives that we want to walk through because we want to get a direction from the Town Council as to what it is that you want us to move forward with. If you recall, in some of our earlier presentations, we talked about phasing the project out because we knew that, you know, it was definitely coming in a little bit more than what we had originally projected and what we had originally allocated from ARPA funding. If you recall, that number very early on was about $1.3 million. When we identified the need for stabilized parking, for the fencing around the park and everything else, we knew that that project was going to approach $2 million. As you can see, with everything that's specked out and essentially a soup-to-nuts approach for this project, you're looking at $2,617,000 if we were to fund everything that's allocated there. What I would recommend to the Town Council, or let me just bring to your attention, and I would make a recommendation to you, is to consider the bid tabulation that's before you on the screen outlines the bid that came in from East Coast builders in comparison to some of their other competitors. And what you will see is that they were clearly, obviously, the lowest base bid, and they were very either competitive or lower on some of the ad alternatives. However, in some areas, there's two in particular, they were a little bit higher than their competitors, and those are some areas that we may want to consider basically leaving off of this award and going out for bids separately on. One of them is the chain link fence, and I want to bring something to your attention on the chain link fence. The chain link fence that's specked, in the speck that was sent out to all of the bidders, was an eight-foot-high chain link fence. We don't really, you know, that's not something that we typically use. We typically use six-foot-high chain link fence. So, I think there would be savings there, whoever we use, whether it was East Coast or another builder. You know, if we specked out and made it six foot instead of the eight foot that originally got specked, I think that there would be a significant savings. There's over 5,000 linear feet of fencing around the perimeter of the park. And quite frankly, we think that there is an opportunity to save some money there. I think if we were to go out and actually bid that separately, just the chain link fencing, I think we could recognize significant savings there. There is also the thought, the council, if the council so chose, they could elect to not do the fencing at all, and that would be additional savings. In the original base bid, it does specify PVC fencing around the perimeter. So, that's an option for the council as well. But I know that some of you may want to discuss that. I think there was a concern about security around the park, and so chain link was, I know, suggested and requested by at least, you know, one or two of you. As far as going through the ad alternatives, the gutters and downspouts, I think, are a necessary type thing. If you look at that, East Coast builders was, you know, cheaper than everybody else's. The light poles, these are light poles that are not in the stabilized parking areas but specific to the actual parking in front of the restroom building. Those three light poles there, they were very, obviously, competitive. They were the lowest ones. I think that makes sense to award that to them as well. The stone veneer around the exterior columns, that's, that might be an opportunity that we could explore, you know, looking at another contractor to do that at a later date. Because if you look at their bid, it was $75,000, whereas the competitors, you know, it's kind of out of line with the rest of their competitors. So, there might be an opportunity for us to save some money there. As well as the, you know, the stone treatment that they propose is much higher than everybody else. So, that I would exclude. But if you look at everything else, the stabilized grass parking area and everything else, it all seems to be in line. The only other opportunity that I think we would have for significant savings would be in the chain link fence around the park. So, my recommendation to the Town Council would be to consider excluding the chain link fence around that as part of this award, and also the stone veneers and the sealant treatment around the exterior columns. And I remain, if you have any questions, to ask about it.
Thank you, Russell.
I've got a couple of questions.
All right, let me open up to the council. Please give me your thoughts.
Yeah, Russell and I have been going back and forth on the fence for, I think, since this project started. And, you know, although I think that the PVC crossbuck fence like we have at the barn is probably fine in a residential area where we don't have a lot of external traffic. But in my mind, we're building a beautiful building, and it's right across the street from Tom Thumb, which is probably where the most of our crime in the entire town occurs, from outsiders. So, you know, I have got concerns about not fencing in the park and having a beautiful facility that could be vandalized to the tunes of many thousands of dollars on any given night. So, I really believe that the fencing ought not wait till sometime in the future. I think it ought to be up when we start construction to protect it from that point forward.
So, you can do the fencing first?
Well, along with the building of the building itself.
So, let me just throw out, I absolutely understand what you're saying. I don't disagree with it at all. We need to protect this investment.
Right.
My concern is more from an aesthetic point of view. To me, this is the front door of Southwest Ranches. This is, this is really going to be, well, you know, no matter how you come into the ranch, this is kind of like our front door. And so, I really am hesitant to have our front door be a chain link fence. I believe it needs to be secure, like what you're saying. But I don't want it to look like it's a prison, you know? I don't want that look of a chain link fence there. I want it to be something that is inviting, something that looks like Southwest Ranches, that looks like an equestrian type of facility, even as you're driving by. And so, I don't know, I don't know what the right solution is. I'm not, because I agree with what you're saying.
Waiting for proposal, Mayor.
I agree with what you're saying, Bob. I don't know, I don't know if there is, you know, some sort of a picket fence or some, you know, something that can look.
I have an open mind.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to protect our investment.
And I agree with you 100%. So, I don't want to, you know, in any way say that, you're right, you're right. But I don't want it to be a chain link fence with some barbed wire on top.
I'm not an asset, of course not.
Well, I say, but that's what we have at other parks.
Uh, that, I think.
Yeah, so that's why, that's why I don't want to go there. And that's why I'm saying.
Sure, no barbed wire, folks. That wasn't my intention ever.
Razor wire.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Gary.
So, it needs to have, I think it needs to have the right look.
Sure.
So, and I'm not the person to come up with that, but I wanted to make sure that.
Maybe we limit it then and just chain link around the facility itself? I mean, I'm just trying to protect that from vandalism because we have it at our parks.
I'm actually, that's, actually, I think that's maybe a great idea, just do it around the facility.
It might be to have a mini area right around it, but I don't, I, yeah, I can't help but think we might be kidding ourselves here because you can hop a chain link fence.
Yeah, and that's the other side of it. I think we need, we need some proper lighting on it, and I'm not saying light it up. Noel's sitting right there. He wouldn't let me do it anyway, but that's not, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying within our lighting code, but to make sure that it can be seen, you know, because that's, I mean, and that can definitely be done within our lighting.
Yeah, I need to point out to you guys, too, that right behind Tom Thumb is Calusa Corner, is Calusa, and they have white picket fence. I mean, they have the white PVC fence, and.
And I think it looks great, and I think that's, I think that's kind of what we should be putting there, but.
Yeah, I don't see a vandalism issue there, but, you know, they don't have the bathroom facility, but they do have some amenities, you know, going forward. But if I could change the direction here just a little bit, some of these bids numbers, have you looked at them really closely?
Yeah. They're outrageous.
Really off the charts. If you look between the top two.
Russell, are you hearing what we're saying? Yeah, no, no, no problem. Gary's questioning the bids.
And so am I, okay, and that's what we were caucusing about. If you look, if you look at the numbers, there is such disparity in some of the lines. You know, I was pointing out immediately Line J, Division 10 Specialties, the potential winning bidder, $250,000. Everyone else is at $40,000 or $30,000. There is such disparity on so many of these lines. It's not just that one. If you go through it, look at P, the winning, potential winning bidder, $190, $450, $400. This $200,000 swing, to me, as an attorney, shows that there's a lack of understanding amongst the vendors of what would be required in each of those categories, a lack of clarity. So, what I recommend, and I hear both sides of the equation, is that there should be a meeting with all of these vendors, you know, it could be a collaborative meeting, and say to them, something's off here because this doesn't make sense. You know, and maybe after that meeting, you tell them, come back and give us a best and final offer, which is done all the time and allowed, you know, based upon their confirmation of what they think their number is, and that alone could drive the entire bid down from where you see it today. But these are too great of discrepancies to make any logical sense.
Yeah.
Mayor, just to address one other thing related to that, and I don't quarrel with what Keith is saying, but I just want to add to that conversation. So, a couple of things. One is that the number that came in as the base bid, if you recall, was very close to what our architect projected it to be total. So, that didn't give us rise for concern because it came in at close to what the number was. Whether there's disparity in some line items or not, as long as the total project being bid on by the contractor came in close to what our architect of record suggested that it would come in as, gave us some clarity. We certainly could bring this back, you know, we can certainly table the item if council needs that clarity, and we can meet with the different contractors. But you also have to look at, there's certain line items here where, you know, this contractor has a price that's, you know, in some cases, higher than the competitor, in some cases, lower. They were the only contractor during the process that was asking us questions. So, if anything, they have the best.
Which, the one they selected?
The one that we selected, right, as the lowest bidder. They were the only ones that asked the questions. They were the only ones that reached out. So, they have the best, you know, if you will, the best understanding of what's being proposed. So, that, I think, goes a long way to that as well. I'm not averse to tabling this item, that everybody has a sense of clarity and they're comfortable with it.
What's the high-level impact, if any? I know these are ARPA funds, that there is, we're time limited on those.
That's correct.
So, talk a little bit about, I'm not proposing, I just want to understand the full impact if we were to go back. What, talk to me about that.
We have, because they are ARPA funding, funding dollars, we have to obligate the funding by the end of this year.
Okay.
So, that means the issuance of a PO and, you know, a notice to proceed.
We've got two meetings left before the end of the year.
Correct. So, if we table this, we're talking about November 21st, and so we're cutting it very, very, very close. So, that's a concern. But I think, I mean.
We can always call a special meeting.
Was that, I'm sorry.
I would like Christina to come up to the mic and just basically explain that this is a straight bid, and she has. Christina Semiraro is our procurement officer. For those that don't know who she is, she's highly qualified. She has all of the credentialing as it goes for procurement, so I would definitely like to hear her opinion on this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Christina Semiraro. I would like to put into the record that this is a formal, straight. I would like to put into the record that this is a formal, straight invitation to bid, which means that this is our comparison. These are the bids that have been publicly opened in a publicly scheduled meeting. We did go through several weeks of Q and A. And the low apparent, you know, responsive, responsible bidder is the only vendor who asked questions and very specific questions and was poring over the spec. So I'll put that out there. On top of that, we did have an open publicly noticed bid, pre-bid meeting that was non-mandatory, but anybody could have come for that hour, asked questions. That was their time to do that as well. So these are very prescribed.
And who, who showed up at that meeting?
Um, I had, I think, a three or four different, it was virtual and it was in person. So there was multiple ways anybody could have attended, yeah.
But multiple of these did attend that meeting?
I believe at least, at least one of them. Yeah, it was non-mandatory.
Christina, you, when you say one of them, you mean one of them besides East Coast? Was East Coast present at that pre-bid meeting? I think that's...
I would have to check. I believe, I mean, it's all on the website. It's all on the website. And then the other thing that I'll add is that with any type of grant funding, especially federal grant funding, you need to follow your policies and procedures and your code to a T. So the fact that all this pricing is out there now is, it's public. Put this back out to bid could cause issues. Or to have them try to come in and start giving the look that they could be negotiating could also cause issues because again, you're supposed to, what they do when they audit these contracts is they check that you followed your process to a T. That's what they review. So the fact that we want to now go off-grid and start calling in vendors on a straight bid, which is lowest responsive, responsive bidder, could open up...
Gotcha. Yeah, I, you know, I think the, I mean, Keith, you, you bring up a great point. But what I have seen in other bids over the last 16, 18 years is that vendors place their costs under different lines. They understand the overall bid, but they, they divvy up their costs differently depending on how their different companies are structured and who's going to do the work within their company and things like that. And I, and I'm, I don't know, I don't know any of these companies. But when I saw them, I saw that disparity and that's what I personally attributed it to. I've seen it before many times. And so it didn't, it was maybe a yellow flag. I wouldn't say it was a red flag. It was a yellow flag. But at the end of the day, to me, we have a large funding that's available to us. We have a good qualified vendor that can do the work. I think we need to proceed. I think we need to proceed. If we had more time, if we were not, if the, if the amount wasn't so large and the risk of losing all that funding wasn't out there, I think the risk is too high. And I think, I feel comfortable that both the, the firm that estimated it and the firm that actually bid it came in with similar numbers. I feel like we've got, we've got a good bid here. So I would go back to where we were, basically where Russell's discussion was, where we have two or three items that we need to decide whether we want to do those two or three items and proceed.
Mr. Mayor, I, I concur with exactly what you said. Christina mentioned there was a Q and A option that was available to everybody. If you participate, you, you learn. You snooze, you lose.
Correct.
And, you know, we got this ARPA funding. I want to lock this in like tonight.
Me too.
Yeah, so let's stash it out tonight. I mean, what I'm afraid of, looking at the, the number disparity, I mean, if it was just one or two items, it's one thing, but it's like across the board.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, in my experience in construction of restaurants, multimillion dollar deals and all that throughout my 40 years or whatever, whenever there was big disparities like that, it usually resulted in a lot of change orders, which is what you don't want.
Right.
You know, and then, because, because then it's just racking up the price, you know, as far as that goes. That's my fear, you know, right, right, at this point, looking, looking at that. That's a very real possibility coming down the pike. You know, the, the fact that the numbers matched on the bottom, you know, maybe coincidental. I, I kind of doubt it, but, you know, it, it's a probability. So, but we need to move forward.
I think we do.
We could call a special meeting in November if we want to do a sole purpose meeting. And go back and get more clarity on this. That's an option. I'm not saying we're going, we need to do it, just throwing it out there. We could decide tonight, you know, and just address the four or five issues that we're talking about, like PVC fencing, you know, that, that sort of thing. I personally want the PVC fencing.
Yeah, me too.
That's just my preference. I think it'll look fine and we're going to, if we have a vandalism problem, we're going to have vandalism problem, whether it's a chain link, PVC, or razor wire, or whatever else to put on.
Exactly. Right, right. All right, yeah, go ahead.
Christine, I got one question that if we start, like you said, questioning their bids, that could cause a problem because it's already public. If we were to go with East Coast, can we ask them not to do the stonework around the columns? Can you take things out of the contract once it's bid like that to reduce the cost and award it to someone else? Is that something, even though they have the full contract, can we pull us, us certain items out and award it to another contractor?
From the option pricing, the add alternates, yes. From the base bid, no.
Okay.
Does that answer?
Right, okay, okay.
So and then they have to hold their prices for, I believe, 120 days as per the bid anyway, so. But once it's locked in as far as a purchase order, it's locked in unless there's some major market conditions that change with certain items.
So for the fencing, we could tell them we didn't want them to do the fencing and we could look elsewhere? So that wouldn't hurt because that's part of the add-on.
For the alternates?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Also, keep in mind, you could do value engineering as well, once we get the vendors, you know, down at the table, once we award. A lot of times that happens in the beginning of a construction contract as well. So there can be some value engineering that occurs with some of the items, depending on what it is.
Okay. So if we proceed with this, I, you know, I personally, I, I agree with the recommendation that Russell made, that we remove the, the fencing. I don't, I don't think we want eight-foot fencing anyway. So, you know, remove the AA-12, the alternate 12, the alternate 4 for the veneer, and the alternate 3 for the veneer. That's what we're talking about, right, Russell?
That's correct. That would represent a savings on this bid of 380,000 between...
Yeah, I would, I would recommend that we take those three out and proceed with the rest.
I don't disagree. I think it's a great idea.
I just wanted to know how we're going to secure it. I don't agree with Gary on you put up a fence and people will climb it.
Yeah, well, I, I think we'll have time to, we'll, we'll have, we'll have a lot of dollars to be able to do, to solve that problem.
Good. I just, you know, I've been doing estimates my whole career. And when I look at East Coast estimates, way round numbers. I mean, everything ends with three zeros. That's the only thing that makes me suspect their bid, but I'm not going to get in the middle of it. It's crazy.
Yeah, I kind of notice, I kind of notice that too, and I'm looking at, that's why I brought up change orders.
Yeah.
You know, that...
It's a big project. All right, so, so Russell, what do, what are you looking for? You looking for a motion or what are you looking for here?
I am looking for, yes, I am looking for directions, so clearly for a motion to approve this item, to approve the base bid and all of the add alternatives, less those three, three particular items. I think the, does, does the contractor have a question? Oh, okay, the contractor is here, Mayor, in the back, if there is any questions about his bid.
I think we do have questions. I didn't realize that.
Mr. Anzalone, would you please step forward?
Thank you for being here this evening. Sorry, I didn't realize you were here.
No problem.
Can you just introduce yourself?
Frank Anzalone. I'm the owner of East Coast Builders and Developers.
Okay, so speak to us. I think, I think there's a couple of questions that came up. An understanding of kind of that you feel comfortable that you understand all the elements of it and the numbers look like they're rounded out as opposed to being precise numbers. And your thoughts on any potential change orders that might come up?
Well, there wouldn't be any change orders from East Coast. The only way there'll be a change order is if the, the town wants to change something. We have a set of plans. We bid on the set of plans and we'll build it exactly like the plans. So if there's a change order, it would come from the town asking me for a change order.
What if you came across something unexpected like in, in, in the dirt or, or the, the foundation there that you, I mean, that could be a change order, right, or?
No, there was a geotechnical report and I take it as the geotechnical report.
So you're putting on the record that you will not initiate any change orders?
Well, no.
You will not initiate any change orders?
I wouldn't initiate a change order based on the plans.
Right.
Normally, I did Roland Oak, I did the barn version. I did the rodeo restrooms at the Burj on Rodeo. I built both those restrooms as well. Majority of these, because I put a bid bond up, we provide exactly and do exactly what's in the plans. And then again, someone mentioned, if there is something, let's say like the chain link fence, and you approved it, and then you come to me and say, we would like to use that money for the chain link fence, not do the chain link fence, we would like to do something else, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
If you did the eight-foot chain link fence and then you reduce it to six foot, we would reduce it. I would meet with Christine and your engineer and we would reduce the price accordingly.
Mayor, can I just say one thing? First, Frank, good seeing you. I didn't realize that was his company.
Yeah.
Frank has a stellar reputation in, in development. I want to make sure that's clear on the record. Does a ton of work at Davie and other cities, so I, I see Frank all the time and he is a very good developer, contractor. The one thing, Frank, that, that just, you know, set off an alarm bells on, on me is I just wanted to make sure that you knew every item that you were bidding on because when you see you're at 250 and the guy next to you is 400 and, and vice versa, you know, you're at 190 and the guy next to you is 451, I just want to confirm that what the mayor said is true, which was you basically just filled in the lines looking at the total number, but you weren't actually as concentrating on each individual discipline. Because I don't want you to get in trouble either where you're like, oh my God, now I know why they've bid 400 and I only bid 100.
Well, some of the stuff is a little subjective because they'll put down, they want a sealer. And then I look at CICA or Tremco as a sealer, which is a high-end sealer. Someone else might be looking at a sealer from Home Depot. I don't know.
I have a, I have a question, quick question, yeah, if you don't mind. Where, we're, I think it's agreed that we're eliminating the chain linking and I go with the PVC. Where is the PVC in the base bid?
The PVC is included in one of the items in the, it's not specific. So I have to follow what was given to me. So there's not a, a line item that, that the town asked for, which is the PVC.
Okay, no, it's cur, it was a curiosity question.
I don't know if I included it in the, the wood plastic composites.
But it's in the base bid. That's what I'm really asking.
It's on the plans. It's included in my base bid.
Okay.
I think it's 500, 5,500 and something.
That's really, that answers my question. Thank you.
That's good news.
And it's the same thing with the veneer stone. They don't identify exact stone. You got to assume it's something nice. If I estimated a very low stone and then the town wanted to pick a very expensive stone, you don't know. So if it's very specific on their bid package, the exact item, the model, the specifications, all the numbers would, all the other bidders would be a little closer. But if they're vague on something, then you're going to get disparity on people who are going to Home Depot and people going to higher-end quality stuff.
Talk about the rounding of the numbers. They're all, they're all, they don't look very precise. Is that, is that on, and by, and just your intention to just round it or, or?
Because on this, on this particular bid, you had general conditions and each contractor takes that general conditions under different, they might include their profit and overhead in it, mobilization, someone doesn't. So that could be drastically different. Same thing with exit conditions, existing conditions. That's, if you look at the numbers there, they jump a little bit, but, because it's not specific. They don't give a definition of those, what exactly they're looking for. So those get a little vague and every job I do, every bid I do, they're always all over the place because it's not specific.
Okay.
But at the end, it's the bottom number.
Gotcha. All right.
I'm satisfied.
You're okay?
Yeah.
I'm good.
I'm, I'm good. We're all good. All right.
So what are we pulling exactly? Let's, let's recap everything.
So I think what we're saying, and I'm, I am going to open it up to the public. I think what we're saying is that we want the full base bid and we want all the alternatives with the exception of 3, 4, and 12.
Agreed.
Well, okay. And what we would do is obviously we would look to bid those out separately. And if we find that the bids that come in for those separate items are actually more, then of course, then we will reach back out to Mr. Anzalone and ask him to, to provide those.
Except for that chain link fence.
Right, 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 right.
It works on the chain link, but that doesn't work on the stone veneers, right?
Right.
I'm sorry, say that again, I'm...
The, the concept of bidding it out to a fence contractor works for the fence, but not for the stone, for 3 and 4.
Certainly, it would as well. We can have a, we could have another con, yeah, those are all add alternatives. We can choose to use another contractor to do that. Christina, am I correct in that or? Please, step up to the mic.
I mean, I would note that this is, this was your bid, you know, this was the bid that we put out. This was what was specced by the A and E firm of record. And so those are your prices that came back for those items.
Understood, but I'm, what I'm saying is if we were to spec and, and bid the exact same product for the exterior columns, we could conceivably ask another company to bid on the exact same stone and see what that work comes in at.
You could.
Okay.
So I mean, now we have multiple contractors working on the same...
That could be a concern, right, that could be a concern. I mean, for convenience, certainly you would want to do this. And, you know, it's not as big of an impact as certainly as the, as the chain link fence. So if council wanted to, you know, that's your call. What I was looking for was direction from the council because there was a lot at stake here. Certainly the chain link fence is an easy one to kind of bid that out. But if you wanted to include the stonework, that's, that's up to council, obviously.
I mean, I just, that's something I wouldn't recommend. We have two contractors working on the same site, on the same wall.
We'd, we'd wait until we take full ownership of the...
So be after the fact.
Absolutely, yeah. I wouldn't recommend having...
How do you feel about that, Frank? I mean, in terms of getting the work done?
I don't believe that's, when there's a sealed bid and all the numbers are confidential and they're opened up at one time, so I give a price of $10 and you don't like my price and you put it out to bid, everyone saw my price.
Yep.
So I don't think that's fair, but that's up to the town to make that decision.
I'm, I'm thinking more about the fact that now you got another sub that you're working with that's going to do the stonework and you're doing the rest of the building.
Yeah, that would be, again, that would more than likely be after I leave.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I will, if you went, let's say you wanted to put in the money for the fence and the stone and then during the process you want to amend that, I don't have a problem with that. If you wanted to reduce the price of that fence and use it towards something else, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Steve. Christina mentioned the ARPA funding, the federal funding requires a strict adherence to our policies. So if we've already put the bid out for including these three items that we're removing under ARPA money, if we rebid those out, I think that may jeopardize ARPA money.
Let's, let's be clear about that for a second. So, so there's the base bid and then there's alternatives.
Correct.
So, so each one stands alone, right? We can accept them or we can reject them. Obviously, we are accepting them all. So once we reject, and I'm, I'm stating this like anybody who really knows what they're talking about can correct me later, or correct me, you know, as soon as I get done. But any one of those alternatives, it's an alternative. We either choose to do it or we choose not to do it. And so, so as far as this bid is concerned, we're choosing to do everything except for three items. And we're choosing not to do those items.
Right.
They're, they're now totally excluded from this bid, this contract, this particular thing. And what we do with them down the road is a totally separate, we, we may choose to put up a fence. We may choose not to put up a fence. We may choose to do the veneer. We may choose not to do it. But they stand alone then separately.
My concern, it has to do with if we rebid these out using ARPA funds.
Well, I don't think we'll have an opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
Because I think we're going to be past the deadline.
That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we'll be past the deadline. We'll use that money and that's, I think, part of what, what Russell's larger discussion is. Okay, now he knows what money is going here and then we're going to have to discuss where that extra funding would go to other projects.
All right, that answers my question 100%.
Yeah, Gary.
Yeah, should we leave it, should we leave 3 and 4 in? And then with the understanding that we don't want to do it?
No, no, because we want to be able to allocate that money to something else.
Okay.
Rather than lose it.
What are we going to allocate it to?
That's, will be the next discussion.
Dr. Russell.
That's the next discussion. All right, Jim.
Steve, I have a que, Frank, Frank, I have a question. If we leave off the stone and you put the column up and it ties into the tie beam and they come in and put stone around it afterward, is that going to look funny? Or would you have to reduce the size of the column so that the stone would match the tie beam up top? Because I know the stone's not going to be stuck out of, from, from the tie beam. Because I know the stone's not gonna be stuck out from the tie beam. It's all gonna be a nice, smooth look. So, what would you do?
That's some of the problems you would have if you break it up into different contractors and do that at different times.
Is anybody understand what I'm saying?
I just don't understand how one contractor can be bidding $675, and the other can be bidding $15,000. I have a real hard time saying, yeah, let's go ahead and spend the $15,000 when somebody else bids less than 700 bucks to do the job.
I understand. He might have done it per column. I don't know. But it will change the way that the form's done, and it will change the way that the concrete's poured, because they're gonna have to leave space for the stone. And they don't know what size that stone. We may choose two-inch stone, we may choose one-inch stone. So it would make a big difference once it got to the top. The outlook, the actual look of it wouldn't be quite right. I was just curious, you know. I mean, that could be a problem in the future. And like you said, unless they were the right gear.
We should leave that in because of.
Are you proposing we leave that?
Aesthetic, structural.
Yeah, I mean, the fencing's one thing. That's 290,000. But the other two there, that's pretty much as the building goes up. It's not, it's part of the structural work that's gonna make the building look aesthetic or not.
At $90,000.
Fencing is the exact price I received from Broward Fence Company.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
That was their, that was their bid. I just took their number and put it on there.
So, so talk about the veneer one more time. I mean, to me, veneer by its very definition is something that you're putting on top of. It's not, it's not the full structure. It is something decorative that you're putting on top of it. So why is it a problem adding that later?
Well, it depends on what veneer. That was one of the issues why you have a discrepancy. Whenever you see discrepancies like this changing a lot, it's probably not detailed. So there wasn't a description of the actual type of material, and how it's gonna be applied, and exactly where it was going. That's not on the plans.
I get that. I get that. I'm not, I'm not, that's not my question.
So it depends on the actual stone that you get, how it will affect the column, and how it would affect everything. If it's very thin, if it's a half inch, three-quarter inch, an inch.
You would actually build the column differently, based on a different veneer?
It depends on the overall look that you're trying to get.
No, 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 that's not what I'm asking. You would build the actual column itself differently, depending on a different veneer that you put on there. Is that what you're saying?
No.
Okay. So then we would build the.
Structural drawings I can't change. Those are done by the architect.
Right, right. And that's my point, is you're gonna build that base column the way the base column's gotta be built. And then it's a matter of what veneer we put on there, which is gonna determine the cost.
That is correct.
Okay. So I'm okay. I'm not comfortable, Jim, bidding, paying $15,000 when nobody else is just barely over five grand. It's three times the price. I feel like, I feel like we need to, we need to figure out what's going on there. Worst case, worst case, we can do a separate bid for it, and maybe we'll spend the $15,000 down the line.
So the size of the column's not gonna matter. You've got a set of plans you're going by. And on those, it tells you what size veneer to put on there now?
No.
It doesn't.
That's where the discrepancy comes from. That's where the discrepancies come from.
Type of material.
So.
So someone pricing out veneer at floor decor, and someone else, the architect or the engineer, was thinking a different natural material, the fifth, from 5,000, $15,000 is nothing. It could be a lot more than that, depending on the type of material. There's a lot of columns there.
I don't, I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but when you get to the tie beam, how are you gonna tie that in without any idea how much, or how wide, or how thick, or whatever the veneer is? So it'll be a nice, smooth look. It won't be stuck out like a sore thumb.
Yeah, so when I get to that, when I get to that juncture of the building, I would meet with the engineer or the architect onsite there, and we would discuss it. And they would approve or disapprove anything I'm doing there. They would have the final say. If I have concerns, I would bring the engineer out there, or they would be out there when we're doing the columns, and they would make any decisions if we're altering the structure of the column smaller or wider. They would make that decision based on the veneer type.
All right. All right, I think we've, let me open it to the public. Maybe they'll bring up some other things we haven't thought of. Yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes.
If I, there's one more thing that I did overlook, and I'm sorry to introduce it at the 11th hour.
We're almost at the 11th hour.
I'm sorry, I really am, but I want to get this right.
Go for it.
So, there was a discussion when we were looking at the design of this building, of whether to do tongue and groove on the ceiling, on the underside of the ceiling, if you remember.
Yeah.
And one of the add alternates is actually to remove that and put in plaster over wire and lath. And that's a cost of $30,000. So that's a decision, really, that we wanted to have. We did it as an add alternative, because we wanted you guys to give us direction on that. I remember when we talked about this early on, there was discussion about either tongue and groove or not, because there was concerns about maintenance. So that's something that really I would like direction from the council on, do we go forward with the tongue and groove, or do we do the plaster?
Okay.
We also talked about T-111. And we used that on other, I think.
What, sorry?
T-111.
T-111.
We looked at, I don't know what that is.
It's pilot with grooves. It looks like plank. We put that on.
We looked at that, and we did discuss that with the architect. That was not really recommended by the architect. It was not.
To me, maintenance, to me, maintenance is key. Maintenance is key. We need something that's gonna hold up and not have maintenance bills down the line. So what's, what's, from a maintenance standpoint, what's?
Plaster.
Is that, is that?
You just pressure clean it once. You don't have to refinish it. I mean, you gotta paint it every couple of years, but it doesn't require the same maintenance as wood.
Jim, if I can just, what, from your perspective, what's the?
Calm down. I'll get to it.
A maintenance, plaster is.
The Stucco would be one alternative. And then the tongue and groove, instead of wood tongue and groove, uses synthetic plastic. Which they use. And I install those all the time. It looks like wood, it's plastic.
I like that.
You can hose it off just like you would on media plaster. Get the same look.
Is that in the base bid?
That would be included in my bid.
It would be?
Yes.
In your base or in the add alternative?
Whatever, whatever line item that's in.
I wasn't clear. I'm asking for clarification. Okay. And change it to that. Okay, gotcha.
I'm very easygoing, so.
I know, I know, Frank.
Once you sit down and you pick out the materials, no one's gonna be nitpicking and saying, this is a change order for $20 more, or something like that. That's not.
I, I mean, I think that would be my preferred.
I agree.
You okay with that? Gary, are you good with that?
Say that one more time, please.
Mayor, before we make.
Let me, let me just, hold on a second. We're talking about tongue and groove, but not out of wood, out of the, kind of the plastic material that looks like wood. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's probably better.
Yeah, good, good. Okay.
That's in, that's in the base bid.
It is. That's what he said. We're good.
We can remove that out also.
We could take the 30, yeah.
30 you could take out. So I just want to give, if you'll indulge me, the staff member who's most responsible for these facilities out there, once they're built, and responsible for the maintenance of them once they're built, I'd like to ask December to come up and. All right, come on up. Make it short. Make it short.
Come up to the mic, so everybody in the world can hear you.
Hi, everybody. I'm your Parks Director, December Loretano Haynes. And I've been sitting over there like, you know.
Sorry for not recognizing you.
I'm so sorry that this is so unclear, but I wanted to let you guys know that in terms, in terms of tongue and groove versus T-111, we do have T-111 at the Equestrian Park. That park was opened in 2004. It's 20 years old. It's held up beautifully. We have specced that, that look for every picnic pavilion that we have, and that's the reason why I'm so attached to it, because it has a beautiful look. It's not that it has to be T-111. Tongue and groove looks just as nice. I have tongue and groove at another location, and it holds up very well, too. So I don't think that you have to really worry about maintenance aspect. Plaster, wood, anybody that wants to do any kind of, you know, vandalism or graffiti or anything, they can, we're gonna have to deal with that as it comes up. In terms of the fencing, I do want you guys to know, I know you've talked about it. The original specification that we used is the same type of tan, three-rail, equestrian-style fencing as we have at the Rolling Oaks Park and at the Sunshine Ranches Equestrian Park, which was a standard that was deliberately chosen amongst other things when we were developing those parks in the past. And in terms of the veneers, we have the picnic pavilion, the Gary A. Poliakoff Founder's Trailside Park, which was a pavilion, a just old plain old pavilion, and later on, we put some stone veneer on it, and it came out beautifully. And also, I did want to reiterate that Mr. Anzalone did a beautiful job on the Rolling Oaks Barn, which we all love so much. And he, he's, you know, he's brought a lot of confidence to the way that he did this proposal, so. As far as the add alternates are concerned, you can choose all of them or none of them. We're gonna make a beautiful building, one way or the other. Whether or not we plant the trees now, or we plant the stone veneer now, we will make it a complete project by the time we're ready to do our grand opening.
Awesome. Thank you, December.
Thank you for letting me say it. I appreciate it.
No, thank you for coming up.
I have another question.
Okay.
All right, so we are eliminating the two veneers.
Yeah.
We're eliminating the tongue and groove.
Right.
So those are three items, and we're eliminating the chain link. So it's a total of four items. And then my next question is, what is the difference between the? It's number 11, the pre-weathered galvalume versus the slate gray. That's got a $25,000 price tag on it. What is?
Yeah, that's the, basically, the exterior of the, of the roof. And basically, the galvalume is what's in our rural identification program, so that's more consistent. So if we went in, if we chose the permacolor, the slate gray, in lieu of the pre-weather galvalume, we think that not using that add alternative will stay true to our rural identification program. And it'll save us some money. They're very close in color. I don't think there's a major difference there. We explored the price of the slate gray color for the roofing material, but the pre-weather galvalume is actually spelled out in our rural identification program. And so we would have the opportunity to save 25,000. That's consistent with what we have at the barn. Not at the barn, at the Equestrian Park.
All right, so you're saying if we take out 11, the galvalume is in the base bid?
Yes, in lieu. That's why it says in lieu of the pre-weather galvalume.
Can I?
Yeah, sure, of course.
December, can you just give your thoughts on that?
I'm so sorry. I also wanted to let you all know about that. The galvalume will have a very similar look, and it's a much higher-end product with a much higher-end finish, but it's a roof. And the, the look of the building has been kind of designed to look like our town standard, those kind of colors. And the other thing is that the Rural Public Arts and Design Advisory Board has been consulted about this project, but they haven't been given all of their choices on all of the finishes. The roof was an important one that we knew, that if we went past the town standard of the galvalume for a painted or a powder-coated metal standing seam, that it would cost more. But we wanted to make sure that we didn't make a choice without, you know, your input on it. The Rural Public Arts and Design Advisory Board should have some opportunity to make choices on color choices for veneer columns and paint colors, and we don't want to make those choices without the community's input.
Yeah, well, right now, we're in the 11th hour.
Yeah.
We can make those, we can make this choice without choosing the paint colors and the veneer colors.
No, I mean, the paint colors, that's a, that's a different story. We can make that up.
But the roof is, you know, that's important.
So, so what are we looking for on that, on that 11?
I would, I would not go with the add alternate. I would just go with the base bid.
Go with the base, okay.
So, just to recap this, and I'm talking for the record here. We're gonna eliminate three, four, number 10, number 12, and.
11.
Number 11.
Yeah. Three, four, 10, 11, 12.
Wow.
Right. Okay, and all of those are covered in the base bids.
I'm okay with that.
That's what I'm hearing. Well, I mean, the veneer is not, the veneer is not covered.
Oh, the veneer.
Yeah, but the others are.
But the others, but the other three are.
Yeah, that's correct. Okay.
So if anybody's wondering, the savings would be $435,000 off of that total 2.6.
Great, great. All right, let me open up to the public. Jim, I apologize for.
Russell, how much was that again? I'm sorry.
$435,000 of savings from the 2.6 that's represented there, so the total award would be.
Jim Lasky, Southwest Ranches. Years ago, when I was a kid, this is the first job I ever had. I worked for 150 Architects, Cooper Carey Architects, in Atlanta, Georgia. And we designed everything to be maintenance-free. Because then you have a big building, bigger it is, the more the maintenance costs are. And you seldom find, you know, the right people to fix things after the fact, like leaking windows and curtain wall, all this kind of stuff. We built commercial buildings. This is a slightly commercial building. But your architect should have given you a book of specifications and the details on the plans, so you don't have all these kind of discussions on how you're gonna make the stone fit against the column and all that. You can't change the structural. That, that's, you know, but there should be details on whatever covering is gonna go on there. And he's supposed to use his head and pick out the least, I would think, the stuff that requires the least maintenance. Now, you got, evidently, from what December says, you've got all kinds of things to compare all over the town. There's a basis for how you make your decision, but the architect should have had all that in the planning. You know, anyway, I saw this architect do the one at Fisher Hill Park, and a good friend of mine, a structural engineer, we looked at it. And I think the bathrooms, the plumbing in there, had to be redone, okay? That's a defect of the architect. He should have known what that kind of a bathroom would require for all kinds of vandalism, anything else. So, anyway, don't pick them again, and try to make this thing more accurate, simple. It should be simple. It's a little crap house, okay? I mean, really, this is not parking garage or something. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you, Jim. Any other public comment?
John Garrati, 162nd Avenue. I heard the word "plastic." Let's try and stay away from, you know, if we're going in a zero-waste direction, I know that there's a lot of modern materials, but let's, plastic, let's reduce that as much as possible. I mean, it's our goal, right? And that's part of the whole concept, so that's why I jumped up and said, let's, you know, let's use our head. Everything we're gonna do going forward, every decision has to be, all right, where's this gonna end up in 50, 60, 70 years, 40 years? So, I heard "plastic." That's why I'm up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none. I would say that the, is a valid point, start the plastic, but I would say what we should do is not, not use the plastic. We should be reusing plastic. That's what it should be. We should make sure that it's, make sure that it's recycled plastic.
Mayor, all of the composites that I've used in construction projects have all been recycled plastics.
Exactly. That's exactly what I expected.
And it has an outer coating, which is new to contain the rest of it that's, that's in it.
So that, 100%.
Yeah, so basically, what we're gonna be probably doing is using the recycled.
Using recycled material.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. All right. Okay, so I think, I think that we have arrived at a.
Consensus.
Consensus, yes. Yes, it was a long and windy road, but I think, I think that we are there.
No, you're right.
So, so we, do we need, we need a formal?
Yeah, I would like to just make sure that we approve this with the amount being the not to exceed the $2,182,000.
Lay it out there for us, so we can make a motion approving.
See, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, and we'll have to amend the agreement, but if you approve it, subject to, right, of course. So the amount will be $2,182,000 in total, with the base bid, including all of the add alternatives that you chose, less the ones that you said to exclude.
Okay.
There's already a motion and a second.
We need a motion and a second.
There's already a motion and a second.
What is it?
There's already a motion. You're doing the amendment.
We need to adjust it.
To adjust it.
So who made the motion?
I think I did. Okay, yeah. I'll amend my motion to include the removal of items. A3, A4, A10, A11, A12.
For a total amount of?
$2,182,000. Emile, you wanna double-check my math? It's good. I ran it twice.
We have a savings of $435,000.
Correct.
Right, correct.
Okay, so we have that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second.
So now we need to figure out how to spend the four and third.
Well, let's vote on this, all right.
It's coming up. Trust me, we got time.
All right, so any further discussion on this item? We've already opened it up to the public.
I'm happy for this. Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Okay.
Councilmember Albreton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski. Mayor Bry Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Back to you, Russell.
Now, that was painful. This is probably a little bit, it's going to be a little bit painful.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Before we go back to you, actually, we should go to item 20 first, right?
Yes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, item number 20, please.
Item 20 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, establishing the Town of Southwest Ranches perpetual maintenance responsibility for frontier trails conservation easement, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
All right, so, Russell, I want you to talk about this, the five years and how that all plays out.
Yeah.
So, hey, we need quiet, we need quiet, please.
Yeah.
Mayor?
I can't hear anything.
Please.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor, yeah, so this item is basically a perpetual maintenance agreement, and this is tied to the BBX site plan, the Altman Properties BBX site plan. So because of the site plan for BBX and the construction of that building will impact the former CCA site, there is off-site mitigation that's required for them to impact because it has jurisdictional wetlands on that site. So we have a property, the Frontier Trails Park, essentially, that will serve as a site for them to effectuate some off-site mitigation. And what was proposed was to do a mitigation bank at that property. This conservation easement requires, obviously, maintenance for that mitigation site. And so what this deal does, or what this resolution does, it establishes that after the site, the mitigation site is established, that we will be responsible for perpetual maintenance. BBX, Altman Properties, is looking for assurances that the town will continue the maintenance on that property after they turn it over to the town. And that's what the purpose of this resolution is. Keith constructed the resolution and can fill in any blanks that I left out.
Yeah, probably two things for the record. First, and foremost, this only goes into effect if they close their property. If they don't close on the property, there's no conservation easement. I want to make sure that's clear. Okay, secondly, the federal government cares the most about the first five years of a wetland bank, because that's when it has to take. And that is when the maintenance costs are the most severe. BBX or Altman Group now is taking care of that five-year period. So they will not be turning it over to the town for maintenance until after it's officially out of that five-year period, and then we will be taking over the maintenance thereafter. As Russell mentioned, I think it could have just been an email with me, a majority of that Frontier Trails property is wetlands today. I think there was only one acre originally that wasn't wetland. And it's probably wetland today, if a new wetland map was gone out there. So essentially, what this does is it improves the existing wetlands on the property. And by improving the wetlands, they get a credit and able to build out completely the town's property, the CCA property. Happy to answer any questions, but this is the conservation easement that would allow the wetlands to be established if they go forward and close on the property.
So, so if that does not go forward, this resolution is moot?
It's moot. In addition, Russell wants me to clarify, it's moot also if the state says, no, we're not going to allow this.
Good, good, perfect. All right, any council discussion on this item? Any public discussion on this item?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Do we have any conceptual of what the drawings of what the wetlands are going to look like there? Or is it just that they're going to be wetlands? Is there any drawing?
We do have conceptual, I don't have them on me, but certainly, we can share them.
Well, you're passing it tonight.
Well, what we're passing is not-
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, what we're passing tonight is the perpetual maintenance agreement. We're not passing the design of the wetlands. What we're passing is the conceptual maintenance agreement.
Obviously, they have designed it, and I thought it should have been available.
The back and forth should not be going on.
Yeah. Thank you, Noel. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. Yeah, Jim?
Mayor, I've got one more quick statement. In the future, Keith, the cost to maintain the property, will we receive money from BBX in the future? Royalties back that could be used to pay for that?
Yes, of course.
Okay, thank you.
It's substantial money, not a little money.
Way more than what it's going to cost to submit, to maintain that.
Right, so it's not really going to cost the town anything. Thank you.
It'll just reduce that large amount by a small amount. Excellent, great point, Jim. All right, any other council comment? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski. Mayor Bry Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Excellent. All right, Russell, back to you.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. Thank you for indulging me in this. It's, you know, there's a lot of navigation here, and the only way to really do this was to get everybody together and kind of walk everybody through what we're trying to accomplish here, to get clear direction on this. So as you know, the town received 3.9, over $3.9 million in ARPA funding. And we have been reporting to the state, what ARPA, I'm sorry, to the state, to the federal government, what we intended to do with those monies. So back in 2023, we outlined, and we've reported to the federal government that we had planned to do several projects totaling the $3.985 million. That reporting essentially was consistent in 2023 and 2024. But as I alluded to earlier, there is a deadline that we are fastly, you know, quickly approaching that we have to allocate the ARPA funding to, otherwise, we risk losing it. And I think in our discussions, I can safely say that, and it's my intention, and I know it's, I believe it's all of your intentions, that we should avail ourselves to every single penny of that ARPA funding that we have. It allows us to do some substantial projects in the town without any millage impact to the residents. And so this is a great opportunity for us to spend some money and do some really significant projects. So since we're fast approaching, one of the items that really has been, you know, an area of concern, and we were kind of holding it out, and it was basically the linchpin of some of our ARPA funding projects, was the fire station. We still are awaiting state and county to respond to our request to build the fire station, as everybody knows now.
Public safety building.
Sorry, public safety building, multi-purpose public safety building into the, in the Country Estates Park, is what the plan is. Originally, we were looking to acquire property. We had entered into negotiations with the church out by 186, out in that area. And those negotiations kind of fell through. And so the plan moved forward was to build this public safety facility in the Country Estates Park. We're awaiting, as I said, state and county approvals for that. And so we don't want to continue to wait because it could put our funding in jeopardy. So what we're recommending is for us to consider reallocating the funding to other projects so that we can basically spend all of that money. Some of these other projects are significant projects that the council would have considered taking the funding out of fund balance, or also known as reserves, anyway. So what we're proposing is for you to look at the ARPA-
If we, if I can just interject one thing?
Sure.
Because we had already had the discussion, I don't want people to think we're just spending our reserves. We already had the discussion of setting a new policy of where we want our reserves to be. And our reserves are way higher than where we want them to be. So really, what we're doing is taking that money and using it for the public good on projects that we want to do, rather than it just sitting in the bank.
Right, great point, Mayor. Thank you for that. So if you look at the furthest right column, this is what we're proposing for 2025. And basically, you can follow the line items all the way across, but essentially, so let's look at the different projects that we're proposing. So the first one is the Town Hall kiosk. That's already, that project's already been completed. We spent some ARPA dollars to complete that project, $3,000. We also got a contribution from our building department provider for that, and we were able to acquire that and put that in. We've done that already. That project is completed. The other thing was the public safety facility land acquisition. We had allocated $750,000 that we thought we were going to spend to acquire that property. We have spent about $44,000, almost $45,000 in due diligence costs for appraisals and survey work and some other things to look into the feasibility of buying and closing on that parcel. Since it doesn't appear that we're going to do that, that $44,000 has been spent. We have to, and I'll go back to that in a second, but that's what we've spent out of what we thought was going to be ARPA funding to this point. I do want to make a very important distinction that, you know, we need to make. If we decide not to use ARPA funding to purchase that property, which doesn't appear that we're going to do, we can't use the ARPA funding for that due diligence, for that $45,000. So that would have to basically come out of fund balance or some other funding source to do that. So just, then that's an important point for later on. So tonight, and I have asked that this item be held until after we have this discussion to get further direction from you all, we have proposed an item to spend $131,440 for the two LED monument signs. And that's an item that's on this agenda. We were proposing that we spend that out of ARPA funding. We would have the ability to go ahead and issue a PO for that after tonight, if that's what council desires us to do. It would be ARPA-eligible, and we can spend that money out of ARPA. Moving forward, I had a number in there of $2.417 for the, I'm sorry, $2,417,000 for the restroom building. We've now whittled that down even further. And why it's important to note that it's $2.417 million is because the total price was $2.617 million, but we had received a FERDA grant for that. So that was going to offset it by $200,000, and we weren't going to need to spend the $2.6 from ARPA funding. Now that we've whittled that number down to $2.182, less the, less the $200,000, what we're looking at is $1,982,000 to spend out of ARPA for that particular item, based on the approval that you just gave us just today.
Say that number again, Russell.
$1,982,000. Emile, you want to double-check that? Okay, I got the thumbs up from Emile.
Nice, nice.
Some of the other projects going down the list, the Dykes Road piping project, which we had been using the number of $571,000, $571,500. That's the number that we had projected that project to cost. Based on numbers that I've received today, it looks like that number is going to come down a little bit to about $515,000 from the number that I got today. So we have an opportunity to reduce that number even further. The Town Hall voice-over IP phone service, that project has actually been completed. What we did, if you recall, is we bought a brand-new phone system for the town, and we prepaid five years' worth of service. So we're still benefiting from that ARPA-funded project, because we don't get a monthly phone bill on that. We also did Town Hall internet fiber service, and we also prepaid that for a number of years. So we paid, those two projects are completed already. So those are fixed costs. The other two items that were listed as ongoing projects were the Town Hall safety improvements, where we wanted to build some access control for the Town Hall facility, and also build a new, a new wall, if you will, and door, security door, that leads to the back where the building department is and where the parks department is. And so we had estimated that project to cost us about $81,000. And also, the Town Hall multi-purpose storage building, which is proposed to replace the storage shed that's in the back, that's in disrepair and needs to be replaced. So we were-
Would that be Andy's garage?
Yes, that would be Andy's garage. And whenever it gets built, that's certainly what I would recommend that we name it. That is proposed to be a metal building with a cost of $50,000. Now, again, we are pushing up against the funding deadline. So what I would propose is that we consider, just for your consideration, removing a couple of these projects from this list and replace it with one large project that we have right now that's about to be ongoing. It's the Green Meadows Drainage Project. So we had done a bid for Green Meadows Drainage. And for that project, we had also received a FDEP grant in the amount of 700, it was actually over $791,000, but after surveying and design, that's what we had left over. The base bid for that project came in at $624,000, leaving us over $166,000 of that FDEP grant to use for, potentially, for other ad-alternatives. So those other ad-alternatives, the first one is, and I'm sorry, I don't have all these numbers in front of you right now, but we have talked about this previously. The first ad-alternative is for $763,000. The second ad-alternative is for $375,550. And the third ad-alternative is $237,650. So if we were to apply, if we were to subtotal that, you get the $1,376,200. If we applied what we have right now in the overage from the FDEP grant of 166,211, the funding shortfall to complete not only the base bid for that project, but also the ad-alternatives, basically completing that project in its entirety for that area, for the Green Meadows area, you're looking at $1.12, $1.12,299,989 that we would need to allocate to this project. If we were to look at some of the projects that we would not be funding, there's a potential there for funding some of these things. So what I could, so if we could kind of do the math and go through the exercise, if we decided that we did not want to fund the LED monument signs from ARPA, that's $131,440. The public safety facility engineering, architecture, and permitting costs that we have left over there for that, allocated for that project, of $572,311. The Dykes Road piping, I believe we have about $50,000 in savings. $61, excuse me. If we removed the two ongoing projects that are listed there, the $81,242 for the, for the safety improvements, and the $50,000 for Andy's garage. Oh, I lost my subtotal. Do you have the subtotal there, Emile? I'm sorry, I lost my subtotal. My small, little calculator here. I'll do it again. I'm sorry about that, Mayor. One, are you sure? Hold on a second, because that, hold on. It's the-
Is, let me just-
Go ahead.
It's $131,440.
Right.
$61,000. And the $50,000. I'm actually adding the $435,000 that you will be saving from the public safety.
I figured you jumped ahead a little bit. That's fine. So the subtotal of just those other projects was $895,993? And what Emile is also adding to that pot of money is the amount of money that we saved, because right here, we listed the $2,417,000. But we've already said that that's been reduced because what you guys whittled down off of the ad-alternates. So that number was 400 and how much, Emile?
435.
435. So that gives you a subtotal?
Of $1.330,993.
Right, $1,330,993, which would more than cover the cost to do the funding shortfall for the Green Meadows Drainage Project. We would be able to do the base bid and all of the ad-alternatives and still have a little bit of money left over for any other cost allocations, potentially even, let me just look real quick.
Yeah, how much was left over? Maybe we can throw back in?
Into the LED signs, right.
Right.
Well, it'd be a shortfall of about $10,000. It's $121,004 that would be left over. So we could do the LED signs if you kicked in.
Well, are we saying now we're not doing the multi-purpose building? We're not doing the safety improvements? Is that what we're saying?
We're not saying we're not doing them. What we're saying is, let's not do them out of ARPA funding, because it's going to be a challenge for us to get contractors on board, anyway. What we're saying is, do those projects out of fund balance.
Gotcha.
And then kick in an additional $10,000 so that we can also do the LED monument signs, take $10,000 out of fund balance and the other $121,000 out of the ARPA funding. And basically, what that would do is zero down the ARPA funding very quickly, and we'd be able to get all these other projects. The other thing that's important to note is that we have in this budget for fiscal year '25 that you guys approved, about $750,000. It might be off a couple of dollars, but it's about $750,000 for a Tisdor project for the same area in Green Meadows. You don't want to do that project without doing the drainage project first. So this would be a beautiful tie-in, because you'd be able to do all of the drainage improvements. And then after that's all done, we would be able to do the repaving aspect of it, and you don't have to worry about that particular area for a very long time.
Hey, Jim, so from your perspective, I know through prior conversations with a number of residents in your area, which is where this would affect most, there is some drainage fatigue there with projects always going on and on and on. How do you think this would be? Would this be welcome? Or would this be like, we're ripping up that part of town again?
Those that have the work already done are really appreciative.
Okay.
Those that are expecting the work to be done are dreading it because it did take so long. I don't think we're going to use those same contractors, at least I hope we don't. I hope that it's done on a much quicker basis, you know, that's what I'd really like to see it done.
I can address it.
Yeah. But it would be a great relief for the whole area. What has been done has worked well.
Good. Thank you.
Mayor, I can address the concern about the contractor, too. So this, the base bid and these ad alternatives were a result of a bid that we did, and the contractor that would be awarded the contract is Kayless Contractors, who is a very good contractor that we've been very happy with. Our Public Works Director has been very happy with them. And in fact, they are the same company that is doing the work for the underground piping project at Dykes Road. They've been very responsive, and their costs are very, you know, very, very reasonable.
Good.
I have also, if there, if you have any concerns or questions about what those ad alternatives are as far as the locations, what would be proposed to get done, I can kind of spell that out very quickly if you have, if you have a question about that.
Okay. Can we bring up Rod just for a second?
Of course. Rod, would you please?
Mayor, why Rod, coming up, to tie all this drainage and then do the tis door project? I think that'd be a great, I just, that'd be a great benefit to-
It would be.
Yeah.
It would be. Rod, from your perspective, I know you've got a full plate already. This is another huge project.
Basically, timing and availability and all that.
You know, with all the tis, I mean, are you-
We're, we're happy to get it done. I think, like Russ alluded to, Kayless is an excellent contractor. They've, they've done a fantastic job in every single job they've done for the town. So we feel very confident that it would be a night-and-day difference between the construction that went on back in, you know, several years ago with the other contractor and this one.
Good. Thank you. Council?
Can we go over this one more time? Because, and if I could just-
Because I think-
If I could just pull out this list, but people can like follow the bouncing.
Well, and I think the problem, not the problem, but the issue is going to be there are some other fundings that are not on this list that Russell's getting dollars from.
But I'll, I'll look, I'll cover that again.
Let's do it.
Let's take it from the-
Great, great point, Gary.
Yeah, let's take it from the top.
Sure.
Okay, the third, the 3,000 is done.
Done, correct.
Okay. The 44,308, that's going to be removed.
That's true. Yes, we would remove that. Well, again, if council agrees, we would propose to remove that and take that out. Correct.
Okay. The LED signs, are they being removed?
Actually, we were, we would say, now that we kind of did the arithmetic, we believe that we can add that back in and keep it out of, out of ARPA, and you would still do everything you're looking to do.
But we would take about 10 grand out of reserves to finish it off.
Actually, actually, I said that earlier, but actually, when I look at this again, because we would have to take out the 44,308, we would still have probably 34,308 left over after all of this.
Hmm.
Yeah. Because it wasn't factoring that. We'll do the math again, but I believe we'll be okay. I don't think we'll have to take the 10,000.
So the 131 will stay?
Will stay, correct.
Okay. The 572, is that going?
That will come out.
Okay, that's-
And whenever we have to do the, the public safety facility plans and engineering, architecture, and permitting, we'll have to just fund that out of fund balance.
Okay, that's, so that's admitted, omitted.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the sanctuary park has been reduced to 1.982-
That's correct.
Million?
Yep.
Okay, the 571 is-
We believe it's 510. Is that right?
I think 515 is what you said.
515? What was the number? I got something from Emily.
It's 510. It was 510. That's how I got the-
All right, 510. So that's a savings of 60,000.
Yeah, 61, yeah.
And where is that 61 going?
It's the 472.
I mean, is it going, is it going down to the bottom line?
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Then the, the phone, the phone service is done.
It's been completed. That's been completed.
Okay. The internet fiber, that's been done.
Completed.
That's just shy of 50,000.
Correct.
The town hall safety improvements, that's being omitted?
Correct. We would, again, we would do that project, we would just do it out of-
Right, but it's omitted for these purposes?
Right, for ARPA funding purposes, we would do it.
Andy's Garage has been omitted?
Correct.
Yeah, he's going to be pissed.
He's going to be pissed.
Okay. And that's omitted. All right. And then the three drainage projects in conjunction with the FD, the FDP grant-
Yeah, so yes, that would be added back in.
Plus the 435,000.
Correct.
Will give us what? Instead of 1209, what will that give us?
1244A61.
1284?
1244A61.
Okay. All right. So where is the extra money coming from on, you're showing 1209, and this is 1244?
Yeah, these numbers were based, obviously, on the other numbers being there. So we had the three ad alternatives equal $1,376,200. We had proceeds left over from the FDEP grant of $166. So the funding shortfall for doing just the three drainage project ad alternatives is $1,209,989.
Right.
But when we add back in the savings for the, by omitting the, the two projects there, the town hall safety improvements, the town hall multipurpose building, omitting those two, and also reducing the $2,417 to the $1,982, that savings that's associated with that gives us, Emile? How much?
The total amount?
Yeah.
1.244A61.
Right, that's, yeah, okay, that's what I thought. So the difference, there's still a difference between-
There's still a surplus, so to speak.
Yeah, it's more money left over. It's not a shortfall, though.
It's not a shortfall?
It's not a shortfall, it's an over.
It's a surplus. A surplus of $34,087.
Right.
Okay.
Because if you remember, we were saying we were gonna, we were gonna have to take $10,000 out of fund balance to complete the LED monument signs.
Well, we're gonna move it from there.
But we, but we recognized that the public safety facility, the second item up, the 44,308.
Yeah.
We weren't, we were gonna have to remove that if we weren't gonna do this out of ARPA dollars. If we weren't gonna acquire the land out of ARPA dollars, that 44 comes out altogether.
Okay. So basically, we're gonna have $35,000 surplus, say $34,000.
Right. We'll have a little bit of surplus, which would be nice to have a little bit of a cushion in case the metal building comes in a little bit more, or, well, actually, we're not going to do it out of this, so.
Correct, yeah.
Right, so we're gonna, basically, we're gonna have a surplus of $34,000.
Well, I'm wondering, rather than having that surplus, maybe we should look at the safety hall, the town hall safety improvements or the, the storage building, and just get one of those going, and knowing that it's going to be a portion of ARPA and a portion of reserves.
Yeah. And I think we can do the, we're pretty close to having the metal building for the, the replacement for Andy's Garage.
Okay.
That, that's pretty close. We have proposals in that would meet ARPA, we believe, would meet the ARPA guidelines. We have something in that we think will work. It's just a matter of getting it done.
Okay.
Why don't we take, we're looking at a shortfall of $16,000 to get the, to do Andy's Garage.
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we take the $16,000 from the forfeiture fund? It's taxpayer-
Or reserves. I mean, we already said we were going to reduce reserves, so I'm fine either way.
But it'd come, the, the reserves are something that we do at the end of the year when we get the fire contract, and we get the waste contract, and all, and all of that. That's what we've done in the last three years.
Well, we've done it that way in the last three years because we had a surplus at that point. But that surplus goes into the reserves that we can take out of at any, at any point in time.
I understand, I understand.
At any point in time.
Totally, and I realize the, the forfeiture funds are part of the reserves. I'm just saying, we've got over $400,000.
The money's there, wherever it comes from.
Yeah.
Okay.
We pull it out of there. And that, that makes the whole project taxpayer-free. Any one of the above.
Yep. Okay. I'm fine with that.
I'd just rather see it come out there.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, it's good.
It makes a great slogan.
Okay. So I think we've arrived at, so we're basically putting the metal building back in.
Right.
Okay.
We're gonna fund it with the surplus that's left over from the ARPA funding, and the rest is going to come from the forfeiture fund.
Is this something that needs to be voted on?
I would, I would do it just so that we have it for the record.
Yeah, I think so, too.
It'll be in the minutes. That way, it'll be broken out easier to find five years from now when we're looking to see who-
So make, so, so go for it, Russell.
Emile used to have the number-
I gave you the out, but you didn't take it, so now it's in your lap.
I'd rather, I'd rather the record-
Russell can't make the motion.
I'd rather the record be clear.
He's gonna give it to Emile, I know he is.
I would say, have the town council make a motion to allow us to allocate for ARPA funding the following projects, and then we'll just give a total.
Good.
Okay?
I make a motion, what he said.
So the LED monument signs, the, the sanctuary park, roadway parking and restroom facilities at the, obviously, the number that we agreed to previously.
Mm-hmm.
The Dykes Road piping project, whatever the full funding is for that, which we know we're gonna have a reduction from what's proposed there. The town hall voice-over IP phone service, which has already been completed, the town hall internet fiber, which has been already completed, and finally, the town, I'm sorry, not finally, the town hall multipurpose storage building.
Mm-hmm.
And the three ad alternatives, so ad alternative 1, 2, and 3 for the Green Meadows Drainage Project.
And the kiosk.
Which totals, well, yeah, which totals $1,376,200 for the Green Meadows ad alts, and $3,000 for, or, you know, we don't have to give the numbers, but the town hall kiosk portion.
Good. All right. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Mayor, quick.
Who did?
Yeah, Gary made them.
Gary made the motion? Did somebody second it?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second on the floor. Yeah, Jim?
Did we leave out the town hall safety? I thought we were going to include town hall safety. Start on it.
It's gonna come out of reserves.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion, a second on the floor. Is there any further comment from the council? Seeing none, any public comment?
No.
No. Public comment closed.
They're as confused as we are.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right. Item number, great work, by the way. Russell, thank you. Emile, thank you. Yeah.
I asked one thing. If you could have Emile prepare a quick spreadsheet of everything we just went over, email it to us tomorrow, while it's all fresh.
Yeah, good.
That way, we all have a, you know-
Great idea.
You know?
Great idea.
Should take, should take Emile five minutes.
Yeah, if that one.
Mayor, I will say, I've never spent $3 million that fast in my whole life. Usually takes me at least a couple hours.
Exactly. All right. Approval of the minutes from August 13th, the Budget Workshop. Is there, yeah, go ahead.
Question, did we bring up the LED monument?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. Thank you. Item number 18, please.
Item 18 is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the purchase and installation of two LED monument signs from I2 Visual via cooperative purchasing agreement with the Florida State Cooperative Purchasing Agency contract 22-168, in an amount not to exceed $131,440.00, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective-
No, shoot, bro.
Second.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I know you're probably tired of hearing from me today. Just on this one, can we specify that the funding is supposed to come from ARPA? Because in the resolution, at that time when we wrote this, we weren't clear, I mean, we were certainly going to be asking for it, but we weren't clear if that's where the funding source was going to be.
I'll still amend my motion.
So if we can just make sure that we include that the funding source will be ARPA funding, I know we said that in the spreadsheet, but this is a resolution item that you're taking action on.
And we're comfortable that we're gonna get full funding out of ARPA for this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we already have it.
Yeah, I just, I'm just getting it on the record. Just getting it on the record.
You amend it, it's motion, and I'll amend my second.
Okay, so that's what's in there. So I'm just gonna throw out my thought on this. I support this item. But what gives me hesitation on this item is how it could, I don't want it to destroy the rural look of the town. And I see this thing like flashing red, blue, yellow, hey, we're doing, you know, that's not really what I want. That's not really my, my vision for it, you know? I mean, I could be wrong, you guys, but-
You're right.
But, but I look at this as a tool to, so we're not putting out the, that mobile message